Just click through a little bit what went on last year and what's going on this year and what's forecast for the immediate future anyway. You know, COVID-19, the impact last year, of course, we're all well aware of that. And you know, the testing we did onsite and then the vaccinations we did onsite obviously had a big impact on our operations. And I'm not going to dwell on it. You're all well aware of what COVID-19 did to our community in the last year and we're still, you know, coming out of that. Crime data, both Mark and Eric talked about, you know, the level of crime activity. So on the left is just the sheriff's office, on the right is overall crime data in Pennington County. It's important to include Box Elder reps in Pennington County because that impacts coroner calls, impacts investigations, impacts the jail, and of course impacts, you know, Eric and Mark as a whole when you look at countywide crime. So it's important to look at them in totality, if you will, then to start calls for service. Bottom right, just to highlight, one of our deputies is using an iPad. That's a pilot program that the Hemsley Foundation provided to South Dakota. So officers on the street could literally have an iPad with them and connect to a mental health service provider at Avera, you know, 24/7 and link that person with services and do kind of an assessment, if you will, right on the street at the time. And we've had good success with that statewide. And then they're looking at maybe expanding that. So it's been a, been a good program to help talk about some of the mental health services. Coroner calls, last year we had a record year. And there's a little footnote on the bottom because I know we'll get asked how much is that's related to COVID? In terms of coroner calls, that was only five, 21, five year to date. So COVID itself didn't have a big impact. It's just, you know, we were busy. And in 1998, the county combined the office of sheriff and coroner. So, you know, we're two hats. And we have a number of deputy coroners that do the day-to-day coroner work. And that results in about 19, 18% of those cases where we do autopsies. So obviously there's a cost and it consumes time to do that. You know, one thing that happens with Pennington County, our numbers get inflated because of the hospital here. So people get ground ambulance here or get lifelighted here and they pass away here. So if there is an accident in Mead County and they lifelike them down here and they pass away, so it's a Pennington County coroner call, it's not a Mead County coroner call. So because of the hospital being a regional provider, it kind of inflates our coroner numbers, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Do we get reimbursed from other counties from that?
What's that?
Do we get reimbursed from other counties if that happens?
No.
They're related.
No. Law enforcement, you heard a lot about meth this morning already. As you can see, meth continues to be the predominant number in terms of drug arrests in Pennington County. 73% of the drug arrests are methamphetamine. Now, year-to-date, 20 numbers compared to 21 numbers, you know, in 21 or total number of felony drug arrests are, are down slightly. Hang on a second. You have the last one, wasn't it? It was the last one. Would you pull that up, the last one, Ron, that did? We, we do a weekly tracker on our social media just showing the number of drug arrests in year-to-date. I don't think we've compared that to 19, but we have it to 20. Fine. When you get it, just let me know. Care campus, the one thing I want to point out, there was discussion this morning about diversion programs. And I think Commissioner Hancock raises a good question, you know, how effective are they, you know, truly effective? And, you know, we looked at this, it's probably been four, five, six years ago, in terms of JSC and JDAI, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. And we took secure dollars and put them into diversion without increasing the budget. There we did actually show that it worked. I think Mark talking about coming to have an in-depth look at all of our diversion programs is a good thing. You know, when we divert 1,147 people to the jail, that's not just a jail diversion, that's a system diversion. That's court time saved, public defender time saved, state's time saved. Yeah. Yeah, so in 2020, year-to-date, we had 74 arrests. This year, year-to-date, 594, so we're actually down 110, so. We'll see where that trend goes. But the diversions, and Barry put a price tag to those diversions, and I don't have the number with me, but it's well over a million dollars in costs that the system's saving. Now, the challenge always is, we say we're saving X amount of dollars, but to claw those dollars back out of their bureaucracy is not always easy. But what it does do is it saves having to increase services sometimes. And we've talked about the jail and the jail diversion. You know, if we can avoid building, spending another $70 million building a third tower in our parking lot out here as opposed to doing some of the diversion programs, I think that's where we see some of the success of diversion programs. We stave off some of that natural growth. And also we find more efficient ways to deal with offenders rather than cycling them through the system. The jail, one thing on care camps, I wanted to mention our partners, of course Barry, the Police Department of Quality of Life, Behavioral Management Systems, Lutheran Social Services. We like using a lot of our nonprofits when we can to partner with us. I think that's a good model for government to use. The jail, you know, the jail population has changed. We don't have a lot of people serving jail time anymore. It's probably 98, 99% pre-trial people. And the ones that do serve jail time, there's a few in the jail, but most of them we use diversions. You'll see in our community work program and electronic monitoring, we find other alternatives to, you know, if they have to serve 10, 15, 20 days for a DUI, for example, there's other alternatives rather than taking up, you know, space in the jail and then keeping them working. So, then I gave you a handout, this handout this morning, and I don't have that up on the slide. I don't think I did.
Kevin, can I stop you a second?
Yep.
So at what point, I mean, if, what point do courts, you know, impose a sentence of how long a period of time? So if they impose a six-month period of time, does that mean they go down to Sioux Falls, the state penitentiary, or a year period of time? Or how long do we keep people in our jail that are literally sentenced to, to jail following their trial?
I mean, once they're convicted before they go to Sioux Falls?
Right.
We get them on the bus pretty quick. If somebody's-
So if they're given a six-month sentence, that means that they will go to Sioux Falls and, and serve in state penitentiary?
Okay, so your question is, does the sentence determine where they go?
Right.
Yeah. No, the judge can sentence somebody to the county jail or to the state penitentiary. The length of the sentence doesn't turn, there's a maximum number. You can sentence to a jail, but if it's six months, you could send them to the county jail, you could send them to the state penitentiary.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So I gave you this handout this morning, and I don't, I don't have a slide up on, on the screen with it, but I wanted to point out that something we're doing very efficiently at the jail. Again, the community work program, it shows 17, over 1,700 hours of work. So these are the people you see around the campus wearing the community work program shirts or the vests.
Do you pay them or is that just volunteer?
What's that?
Do you pay them anything for?
No, that's in, in lieu of their jail sentence.
Okay.
So we have them doing something productive. So that's, that's basically hours they've spent on this campus, picking up trash, pulling weeds, cleaning up the bird droppings in the parking ramp, whatever it might be. So that helps buildings and grounds not have to do that stuff and it makes our campus look better.
Hey Kevin, they also work at the fair too, don't they?
Most of those are department corrections.
Okay.
Occasionally, we've helped with some stuff at the fairgrounds. The bulk of them that Ron Jeffries uses out there are with the State Department Corrections people from the Creek Drive facility.
Word to the least.
And so my, my point is that instead of somebody sitting in the jail cell, we can have them come do community work and pick up trash and pull weeds on our campus rather than sit in the jail cell doing nothing. And if you go down to the kitchen laundry program, and not every jail does this, some have contract staff that do most of this work, some use trustees. I think we use probably more trustees than others. But if you look at the kitchen and laundry, we use the equivalent of 55 FTEs every year to provide our food and laundry service. That's trustees working in our facility. Now, we have a full-time person in the jail that coordinates all that, plus some other additional help. So we're using trustee help instead of paying somebody to do that through our, our food contractor hiring staff to do it. So that's the equivalent of 55 FTEs. The trustees are providing labor in the jail. And on top of that, another number I didn't include was probably, depends on the year, last year was higher because of COVID, 10 to 14 FTEs cleaning the cell blocks and individual pods. Again, that's work that buildings and grounds doesn't have to do, we don't have to do. So somewhere in the neighborhood of 65 to 70 FTEs worth of work are provided by trustees in the jail, keeping that facility clean and keeping it running. And I think that's an important number to put out there that we make them work when we can and it helps also the cause for the taxpayers and for the county.
Lloyd, if you have to go in there, you've got some extra work to do. I had to fit that in, Lloyd.
Again, our MacArthur stuff, you know, our jail reduction strategies and, and Eric talked about this, Commissioner Hancock asked about, you know, the court system and stuff, and we call that case processing. Of all of our initiatives under MacArthur, the slowest one or was the least success at this point has been case processing, moving cases through the system quicker. Because exactly what you're talking about, they get through the system quicker, they sit less in our jail and they go into wherever they're going to go, whether it's the state pen or into a community work program.
What is the solution is working with, and you guys are doing that, what needs to be processed through a court system and what, and that's where you've taken the diversion program where you don't have to, it saves time and money not having to process with a lawyer in a court, court system. That's what basically diversion is trying to get to and also not filling up the jails. Am I correct or?
Again, I'll defer to Eric and Mark a little bit on this, but I mean, diversion in general, one, you're looking for a more effective way to handle people, to stop them coming back through the system.
Right.
Then also to save the system, you know, time and resources. Case processing in general is talking about how cases go through the court system. And we were, started on a good trajectory, but COVID-19 disrupted that last year. So now we're going to try and recover from COVID-19 and, you know, get back upright and try and figure out what can we do within the, the court system, that's all the players, to move cases through the system faster so they don't, people don't languish in the jail.
So how do we know, like we're talking about, if, okay, I'll use Lloyd, just a person that, okay, if, if we think it's going to be a great diversion, we do a person, okay, I'm going to use Lloyd, Lloyd, and then Lloyd does like three crimes. I mean, do you keep track of if diversion is working, it diverted them that one time from, you know what I mean? Because you didn't want them to be in jail, but how many other issues are they having in the community that are actually causing, it might not want to throw them in jail, but they're doing other stuff that's causing, and you already know where I'm going, with one of the guys that was talking about, they're causing other people issues and businesses issues that aren't necessarily going to go to jail for. Does that make sense? How that guy's full of nonsense where he's causing everybody else issue, but it did divert him from jail?
Yeah. And I'm going to defer to, I'm going to defer to Mark as to some of the statistics related to diversion because I mean, he tracks a lot of that.
Okay.
But, but where you're going, I think is, I mean, we can't lock everybody up for everything forever.
Right.
I mean, it's just not realistic.
Right.
And constitutionally, we can't do that.
Right.
So where's that point of somebody that's on diversion not creating more problems versus somebody on diversion that's being effective?
Right.
And I think Mark does a good job of tracking that and they have very strict protocols on diversion as to what you can and can't do. And if you deviate from that, then you're no longer a good candidate for diversion.
And it would be nice to know the statistics on those diversion cases, how much were, you know, successful and how much it, you know, diverted them, like I said, from one area but really didn't divert from another area, so.
I think they've got some numbers on that depth as far as any recidivism and that type of thing. I think they've got some numbers.
For, for like JSC and stuff, I see a huge success. For the adults, I'm not seeing as much. That's my bottom line from what I've seen. For, for kids, I think it's been amazing for what it's done. But I, like you said, I need to see those numbers, Kevin, but I'm just, just saying they're not going in jail, but.
I think a good in-depth look at our diversion programs like Mark, Mark talked about, would be a good thing going forward.
I'll quit asking about that so you can move on, sorry. It just interests me.
Juvenile Services Center, again, our, our population was down out there, again, because of COVID and largely because our federal numbers were down too, which impacts our revenues significantly. You know, the, the Juvenile Services Center, like the jail, is seeing very challenging populations. Mark talked about the number of homicide cases pandemic. I think at any given time, we'd probably get 35 people on our adult side on murder charges and that's federal and state. It's not uncommon to have three, four, or five kids on murder charges at JSC. So the kids that are there and the adults that are there have earned their way into the facility, so to speak. Again, just the numbers, just to highlight our partnership with Lutheran Social Services out there, they run the Arise Center, which is the shelter care side. Lutheran Social Services partners with us at the Care Campus as well and the addiction treatment side, they're excellent partners to work with. And you have the data there, I'm not going to go through all of them, but again, COVID-19 impacted JSC like all of our facilities. More testing impacted the number of volunteers coming into the facility and the frequency of volunteers, but we've weathered it and now we're moving on past the COVID-19 impact. Volunteers, a couple of things, we didn't put reserves on here, but we have about 15 reserve deputies as well. I wanted to give them a shout out, if you will. Search and rescue, they had a nice gift this year, here in the last couple of months. Lady passed away and left them in her will and left them $250,000. And so it was a nice gift for search and rescue. And that allowed us, we have a request in front of you for purchasing radios that allowed us to peel off search and rescues, $42,000 they needed for radios. We're going to buy that out of that donation they received, set some up with a nice equipment reserve going forward. So it was a nice gift from the community. And again, our volunteers, from seniors to kids and everything in between and people coming to our facilities, couldn't do our job and provide the services we do without our volunteers.
So Kevin, are your reserve officers or are they certified too?
They're certified as reserves. So under the state law and administrative rules, you have certification for full-time law, law enforcement officers, and you have certification for reserves and it's two different criteria.
Okay.
Wellness program, we, we started the wellness program. Corey Brubuck, I'm sure retired captain, came back and is doing our wellness program. You know, wellness is, I talked about it last year, but that's, you know, physical, mental, spiritual, financial, it's all aspects and then dealing with critical incidents. As I say, we have a front row seat to life. We see people at their best, we see them at their worst. And you stay in this business long enough, you eventually see everything one human being can do to another human being, and that takes a toll over time. And so taking care of your people, I think also translates to less incidents of improper use of force, things like that, how you treat people on the street. If your people are healthy, they treat people better and, or, we're a model for the state. And I know Commissioner Drew is familiar with House Bill 1064 where they created, they put, the legislature put 200,000 into an endowment fund for providing wellness programs and training, peer support for first responders, that's fire, EMS, and law enforcement across the state. So that's, that's a good thing. So we've had really good success with our peer support team and our wellness program. So, yeah. Budget, we'll talk numbers. Again, our budgets can be pretty easy. Our operating request is flat. The only increase you'll see in our budget is whatever the salary policy guidelines are from the commission, that's the increase you see operating is flat, so it's pretty easy. FTEs, now it looks like an increase, but it's only because the county changed the way, you counted FTEs. So it would have been in '21, you see an increase from '20 to '21, we started capturing, and rightfully so, the part-time people into the FTE count. So our numbers didn't change other than just we counted them different. So we didn't increase by that many FTEs, you just started counting the part-time that weren't counted before. These are always my little sheets, just to talk about budgetary wise, what we do. And I have a moral story when we're done with this, but if you look at '18, we had a reduction in tax support request, '19, and this is all before salary policy. I always advocate for the salary policy and, and support that, but when we bring you our operating budget, in '18, '19, '20, '21, you can see what we asked for. We had significant decrease, there's a slight increase in '20, and in '22, again, a zero was a zero increase in our tax support, which we're reaching the point where we can't do that anymore. I mean, our revenues are down and Cindy talked about that. And some of it's due to our federal numbers, in particular at the Juvenile Services Center, but the impact we're seeing with growth in the county and everything, we just can't continue to do that. I think Cindy touched on this as well. We have a good history of over-collected revenues. Again, you saw the last few years, almost $8 million of revenues we returned to the county coffers. And that largely comes from housing, you know, our federal inmates, other counties, the services we provide where we can bill for offsets the cost for the county. If you remember, we hired Casey Peterson Associates a few years ago to look at all these extra services we provide, because a couple of commissioners asked, and again, a fair question, should we be providing all these extra services? And what Casey Peterson come back and told us, and you have the study and it's, I think it's still on our website too, we could stop housing other inmates, we could stop doing the trip east, we can, you know, stop all these extra services. And you would cut our workload of the sheriff's office by about a third, but then I would need about $6 million more tax support dollars through the same amount of job for, to do a third less work, I'd have to come and ask you for $6 million more dollars. So doing all the extra work we're doing saves county money and provides actually a cheaper alternative for a lot of our partners in Western and South Dakota, so. Expenditure comparison, again, our budget's fairly boring and benign in terms of, you know, the increases, we move some categories around here and there, and you'll see some decrease in revenues. And again, that's largely driven by the fewer number of kids at JSC. On our federal rate currently, you know, one less kid at JSC a year equates to $180,000 a year. So you have two or three less kids, it turns into, you know, real money, you know, federally from our federal contract. And that number's high because of their 84-page statement of work and the services they require for the kids. So looking to the future, this is my last slide and then I'll be quiet. The remodel, and we've talked about that, a building committee, and that's 20-plus million, I think somewhere between 20 and 30 million. I don't think we know a, a firm number yet. What that basically will do is gut the jail and probably give us another 30 years worth of use out of those facilities. So it's a good spend, but it's just a lot of money. The crisis stabilization unit, you know, that's again, appropriate by the legislature, that'll be coming online sometime late next year. You know, requests for proposal in jail services, we're going to rebid out all of our contracts, our, our food, our commissary and our phone services. I mean, we do 800,000 meals a year, so we're spending over a million dollars a year on food service. And so it's time to rebid those out, see if our vendors are all sharpening their pencil and it'll hopefully be a net positive on our budgets. Haven't asked for any FTEs this year. We haven't asked for any FTEs to speak of the last few years in terms of tax support other than the school resource, people that Douglas and the City of Wall came and asked the commission for and the commission granted. It's been about six years since we've asked for tax support FTEs. Again, I can't sustain that. So not asking for anything this year, but over '23 and '24. Brittany and her staff come and did a presentation to our staff this week, very powerful presentation in terms of the growth in the county and the impact that's going to have on our services. It was very interesting, it was very helpful, because it helps us look at calls for service, you know, more housing, just all the traffic patterns, all the things that are going to impact people moving in. And I know their frustration with growth, but Pennington County, the Black Hills are growing. And so to be able to service that, the MacArthur FTEs, you know, that's going to sunset in the next two years and we have to absorb some of that or talk to Liz about looking for other grants to potentially offset some of that. Law enforcement FTEs, and conservatively, we're at 10 FTEs over the next couple of budget cycles. And again, for investigations and our patrol division primarily is where that would fall. Now, there are a number of federal grants out there, they call them COPS grant, grants that we can look at that phase, if we apply and, and get awarded those, where it's a phase in over about a three to four-year period where they pay, you know, 75, 50, and then 25, and then, they vary from grant to grant, but it's offset, so it gives you a chance to phase in some of the cost of the FTEs over a three to four-year period, so. I'm just telling you these things, Phil, as you start looking forward, what you do with dollars this year, what you do with dollars next year and the year after and year after, there's, there's growth coming in our budget that, you know, we just can't stop anymore or sustain what we're doing with the level of services we have to provide. And then 24% of medical coverage, we're probably at about 18 hours right now of medical coverage a day. We'd like to get to 24. Again, that's going to involve some cost, potentially three or four additional FTEs. The population we're serving has more problems than they've ever had in terms of health issues, mental health issues, you know, pick one. We have a high needs population. And when you have, you know, pre-COVID, we're running about 750 people a day in custody with our three facilities, that's a lot of bodies with a lot of needs. And trying to maintain medical coverage without burning out our current medical staff is something we're just going to try and strive for over the next couple of years as well. So with that, bright forecast of all the things going on. I'll stand for any questions you might have and.
So Kevin, except for Rapid City and Box Elder, you provide law enforcement to the other organized communities in the county, correct?
Yeah, we have four contract communities, Wall, New Underwood, Keystone, Hill City. And, you know, Box Elder and Rapid City, I mean, we still work jointly on a lot of things. So if there's growth in Rapid City, growth in Box Elder, I mean, it's more coroner calls. We have a, a joint investigation division where we oversee the domestic violence countywide and the physical abuse and sexual assault, partnered with the police department, but we have a role in that countywide. So all the countywide growth impacts that we do in addition to the communities that we have contract policing with.
And with Forest Service.
And Forest Service. We have a, a small contract with the Forest Service. I was just talking to Commissioner Ross about some of the frustration people are getting with ATVs and UTVs. All visitors is a good thing to the hills, bring a little overrun with ATVs and UTVs and people are voicing some concerns, so we need to maybe address some of that. But, you know, the federal government permits them and then has three law enforcement throughout the entire Black Hills and they just can't provide the coverage that is needed. So that falls back onto the county in a lot of cases.
Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, Commissioner Lassiter.
Couple of questions for you, Sheriff. You mentioned those four communities that have the sheriff deputies out in them. How does that work? Is that coming out of your FTEs and how does that process work for those?
Yeah, there, there are county FTEs under the sheriff's office, so there are FTEs and they're cost shared.
Cost shared?
Yeah.
50/50 or?
It's exactly 60/40, Brian.
60/40 on the contract hours.
Yeah, yeah, about 60/40 on the contract hours.
And the next question I have is, when we first got elected here, we took it board and stuff and you, we talked about kind of how you do revenue, you just kind of over, went over just a little bit, how you save the county $6 million because of the, the federal prisoners and all that kind of stuff. Is there any other revenue that you bring in outside of that? I know you talked about the over, underspent, over-collected. Is there any other revenues that are brought in and generated through?
Yeah, I mean, on our revenue sheet, there's probably hidden countless, there are probably 70 or 80 revenue streams. That's from selling pistol permits to, you know, housing prisoners, to transporting people on the bus. You know, the jail, JSC and the bus are the big ones, civil process of papers, I mean, there's a grants, some federal $400 or state $400 occasionally, there's, there's 70 or 80 revenue streams on there.
Okay.
We, our budget is about 52% tax support, 48% supported by outside revenues.
Okay, 52% tax and 48 outside revenue.
Roughly, and that fluctuates a little bit from year to year, but.
So Kevin, does that, does the state make you have a certain amount of percentage that you have to bring in or anything like? that you have to bring in or anything like that, or just, it's just whatever you?
No, there's no state requirements, it's just as entrepreneurial as we can be to try and generate revenues for Pennington County to provide the services.
Okay, I just didn't know. I thought I heard something about that you guys had to, the state had to get a certain amount or something. Travis, what were you saying? I'm being up straight.
Well, I may, I may have misunderstood whenever we were walking through, there was a lot of different things we talked about, but this is, this is the numbers that I remember us talking about. So he generates about forty-eight percent versus tax support is fifty-two percent, is that? Pretty close to it.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
That comes from other revenues.
The general fund is forty-eight percent, fifty-two you generate. Okay, say that
Fifty-two percent tax support, general fund, forty-eight percent. I knew the exact math on this year, but it's always right in there, a percent or two varies.
Fees and, forty-eight percent is fees and?
Yep, revenues we, we generate.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ross King, Lanson, at the, the budget, under, under jail, it looks like that insurance took a pretty good jump this year. I mean, it was stable for four years, and it took a, almost a ten percent increase.
On which one now?
Uh, under the jail.
Insurance.
That's the only one I saw that there was a significant jump, yeah, just in the percent. Under the general fund, jail, two thirty-two.
I have to pull it and look and see.
This group insurance.
What's that? I mean, any of the increases, as I showed in there, were generally driven by salary policy, insurance, salary policy, those sorts of things, so.
I was just, it was steady, or in two thousand eighteen, it was eighty, eighty-one, then it went down, and then in two thousand twenty-two, it's up to nine fifty-four, so I'm guessing the cost of insurance, so.
All those things impacted?
Yeah, just, only thing I noticed that kind of stood out.
Okay.
Any other questions, Kevin? Kevin, appreciate.
Thank you, I appreciate the support you all, and very helpful when it comes to the jail, laundry, kitchen, and other things, and the needs we have, so thank you.
Thank you. Gonna take all of our audience with him.
That's gotta. Lean, this has got to be a lot easier than the state budget, I'm sure.
Good morning, Commissioners, Audra Castile, Pennington County registrantes. I kept my budget, I feel pretty simple this year. I froze my operations. I am working on, since I joined the county, our offices had two job descriptions besides the registrantes and the chief deputy spot for our employees that I feel were pretty generalized and lumped all of our employees together when they do different tasks and different functions. So I'm currently in the works of rewriting job descriptions, and I have tried to put my people on the job scale or wage scale where I feel they should be, so it may not be where they end up, but I'm hoping that's where they end up, so that's why there's an increase in my wage. And then the insurance, I am still in the process, I have a job open and trying to hire a FTE that I don't know what they'll want for insurance, so I put it at a family rate, just to have myself covered in the budget. And then my modernization and preservation fee, which is a part of that money goes to, that comes out of my recording fees for my office, part of that goes to the general fund, and part of it is kept by my office, so that I can modernization, modernize and preserve my records. And so that goes up five percent every year, so those are the only changes that I.
Okay, that's been a practice for a long time, Audra, the five percent?
Yes.
So was that established by the commission at one point in time, do you know, or?
No, it's, my fees for my maintenance of my software goes up five percent every year to my company that I pay.
Okay, oh, I see, okay.
That's where that's going.
Okay, thank you.
And Audra, explain the, how much you bring in through your fees and your birth and death areas and your non-taxable and stuff, because I think that's huge that your department does bring in a million, two?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm trying to be practical, and I didn't want to overshoot. I, we're slowing down a little bit, I think the refis have kind of come to an end, building, and purchases are still on a higher end, but I didn't want to shoot the moon and, and reach too high next year, just in case. I think we'll still be high, recording wise, with the base, having more people come in. We are seeing a slight decrease this year in our marriages, and if that trend continues, I wanted to be covered in that next year as well. So, not sure why that is, but last year with COVID, we were still on the higher end, but.
Do they have to record when they're divorced, too, or not?
Not in my office, that goes through.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'd like to see the difference.
So, yeah.
I missed that question. What was that question?
Compared to how many people got divorced, and what those fees were once you had to go file? Why, that is weird. So you have to file with you when you're married, but you don't have to file with you guys when you're divorced?
Clerk of courts, that goes through the clerk of courts.
Well, you have to go through the court system, be divorced, but it seems like somewhere it's shown on the marriage certificate that they'd have to file.
They have to answer the question of whether they've been married before with our office when they apply for a marriage license, so they have to state that fact. It's all kept, the marriage license information, and then the divorces are kept by the state vital records office, so.
So, Audra, going to your revenues, so your filing, recording, and transfer fees for a twenty-twenty year actual was nearly one point six million?
Yes.
Which obviously was a huge increase from two thousand nineteen, I mean, from typical previous years.
Yes.
But I, and I, I see you're, you're anticipating one point one for this year. Is that, is that running about at that, or is it running closer to what last year was?
We're running closer to what last year was.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so you may generate considerably more than what was anticipated?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
The third title company, when that came on, we were trying to structure rates for them.
Yes.
So how'd that all turn out?
Um, I had a little, little pushback at first for my current two title companies, but I think they're, they're okay with where we're at, or it just all came about so fast that I think everybody was a little taken back by it, not maybe that they were put back by it, but I think everything is, it's working out fine, though. That title company has been working with my office to get our records and get their title plans set up, so. And I'm working on a process of, of working with my two current title companies and getting them some of our older records that they may not have actually digitized on their end, so.
Lot of, lot of documents.
Yes.
You're doing a good job.
Yes, thank you.
So, I was just wondering, sorry, go ahead. On recordings, what, what would you say you're going to be looking at for two twenty-one, or two thousand twenty-one compared to two thousand twenty, as far as recording various documents, the number of documents?
I think currently, we're at least two thousand over what we were last year, so far this year. But like I said, refinances have kind of, are now coming to an end, and we're not, not feeling that push anymore, so.
Audra, then when looking at revenues on the modernization and preservation fund, explain to me those numbers a little bit, going from twenty-twenty of the seventy thousand, the twenty-one approved at fifty thousand. So what are you really anticipating these to be?
I'm, this is kind of my first year by myself on the budget, so I, I used Donna's direction last year, and then I, I tried to increase it the amount that I felt was fair for the next year. So until I kind of get in the swing of, of working with those fees a little bit more by myself, I, I didn't want to over.
Okay.
Guess. Think that's probably a fair assumption when you're first learning, it's not to overshoot, but it's easier to undershoot and then go, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not going to come supplement my budget.
Yes, I, I tried to find a, I tried to kind of do a fair in-between, that way I didn't have to, wasn't overshooting, but I wasn't having to come ask you guys for a supplement as well.
Other questions?
We're good.
Thank you, Audra.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So it looks like we now have the treasurer's office. Would you like to present now, or do you want to wait until? We're ready for you.
We decided that we would come down and check.
What'd you say, Lloyd?
Okay, a couple of things before we start the budget that we'd like to go, that I'd like to, I'm sorry, inform the commissioner of. In January, our title transfers were at four hun- four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. As of the end of May, they're at fifty-eight thirty-eight, which is an increase of sixteen hundred and nine titles.
Okay, say that one more time, Janet.
They were four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine in January, and the end of May, the total was five thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight title transfers with, for an increase of sixteen hundred and nine. And the ATVs, I know the sheriff spoke to you about some information on the ATVs, and they couldn't give us every year, so what they gave us was sixteen, eighteen, and twenty. And sixteen, we started out at five hundred and one, and through the end of December twenty twenty, they're up to five thousand eight hundred and fourteen. And we know that they're growing every day, because as I've told you before, we have these, this company out of Florida. Now there's a company out of New York that's doing these ATVs from other states for people, and they're all licensing here. It's probably not legal for them to drive in their state, but at this point, South Dakota's an open state, so they can license them here. And they're finding that it's cheaper to license, transfer the title and license than it is to buy a permit when they come to the hills to ride every year.
So what's the fee for a typical transfer?
Well, it's ten dollars. Five dollars goes to the state, five dollars goes to the counties, and they are usually around twenty-some dollars. But we have a lot of out-of-state people now that are calling on the phone and taking up the staff's time on the ATVs, and alls they want is a permit, and then they want it mailed to them, or they want it scanned to them. Well, it takes just as long to do a permit for an ATV as it does to do the title transfer. So we've changed the process there. If they want just a permit, we're charging them five dollars for our service for that permit on the phone and three dollars to scan the information to them, because they want it immediately.
So is that something we can do? We don't have to change the state statute, we can just do that at our own discretion?
Right, we're just considering it an administration fee. And I know Mead County said that they were considering doing it, and Lawrence County is now doing it, because it's just getting to be out of hand.
So is that sufficient to take care of the, your cost?
We really don't want to charge the twenty-five dollars, because state law says it's for a title transfer, and they're not transferring the title at this time. We don't have a title. Alls we have is a registration or a copy. So according to state statute, I'm not, I'm thinking we can't do that. So the budget is before you. I've submitted the resi- the revenues. What would you like to, would you like to go over the budget? There are a few things we're looking.
Let's talk, let's talk FTEs at this one point.
Okay. And we've already started hiring the FTEs that we requested. So the FTEs changed from, just a minute, I have it right here, to, to twenty-three FTEs. They're twenty, they were twenty-three, they were twenty-three for last year, and now they're twenty-six for this year.
Okay, so when, okay, so we originally adopted the current budget for twenty-twenty-one, your, your FTEs was going to be at twenty?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Three.
Twenty-three?
That's correct. Thank you, Deb. And for, and you, when I was out ill, and that came before you, and you made the motion that we could go ahead and hire them now, which raises them to twenty-six for twenty-twenty-one, and they stay at twenty-six for twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. And so, and where are you at in the process with hiring those now?
We have two hired right now.
You got two?
That we're training.
That you're training?
Right. And we're going to have to advertise again.
Okay. When was the last time you advertised?
What, two weeks ago, in that? Two weeks ago.
Okay.
Are you fully staffed now, Dan?
No, Deb, we are not.
How many are you down?
Three, three.
So with that three, would it be twenty-six then?
Yes. And we're also, in case you've had any calls, we have been out like two weeks, fourteen days on title transfers, because there's so many coming in. And this week, some of the staff came in at six in the morning, some of them came at seven, and we started processing. I think today now, we're probably six days out, and now we're hoping that with some overtime tomorrow morning, that we can get caught up, because with July fourth coming and us being closed on a Monday, we're going to have a ton of mail to catch up on, and we don't want to be that far behind going into a holiday. We are, we are looking at, at doing some flex hours when we get everybody trained and up. Some of us, it seems like the computers, the state computers work a lot faster early in the morning than they do when everybody across the state gets in, gets on. So there's going to be people that may come in at six in the morning and work till four, or come in at seven. We're, we're trying to figure that out. We'll take our fastest that can, can get the work processed. We're looking at doing a, a video, we haven't got that done yet. We, we are putting things together for that. Our call center is up. There's times that there's ten people, we checked it this morning, there were ten people waiting in the queue, trying to get through on the telephones, and ninety-nine percent of them are out-of-state people.
How many operators?
There's, there's four stations back there. We have three that are up now, and we have one that's not back there but is still answering the phone. But when we're shorthanded, somebody calls in sick. There was one day, we had one person, so we had to pull him, and at that point, we had to have some people on the front line, which the public doesn't like answering the telephones.
Well, Janice, do you have the total amount of fees that you collect? I know you have them in categories, but what, you didn't have the total amount of fees that you collected? Meaning, like Audra had all her fees, and then how much that total was at the bottom of what your department collects for us?
Well.
Does that make sense, the total amount?
Yeah, did you get, not, the fees that we get to keep, Deb, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Is that all the, the motor B, the administrative, advertising, boat licenses, all that stuff?
For twenty-twenty-one, I have the revised, which was seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred.
Okay.
We changed one of those, and I, and you should have gotten the revised one after Cindy and I talked.
Okay, do we, do we have that, you guys? Charlie, do we have that?
I'm adding it right, right quick.
Okay, and I apologize.
That's.
So that was for twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty?
This is for twenty-twenty-one, the revenues, Deb, is that what you?
Right.
No, she's looking at this right here. Deb, those revenues for twenty-twenty-two equals seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Seventy-eight thousand?
Seven, seven, eight.
Okay.
Two, zero, zero.
Okay.
That's fees that you, you retain, that you collect?
That's correct.
Right. Some people don't know that you collect those and that, what your department does collect, so it's nice for new commissioners and just people in general that, that don't know that you collect that much in fees.
Right.
Okay, I'm still confused on the time period for that. That's twenty-twenty-one?
The figures that you have in front of you right now are for the twenty-twenty-two budget.
Okay.
You had, you had one figure.
The seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred, though, is.
That's twenty-twenty-two.
That's twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
Anticipated revenue.
Anticipated.
That's correct.
Okay, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought it was, that was revenue that had been collected.
It's one oh one, zero one four two, and then it goes zeros, three, three, five, zero, three, four, one. Those revenues is what I'm talking about. It just didn't have a balance at the bottom of it, because it was kind of nice to see how much you guys bring in.
And, and I'm sorry, I did have it on, on my one, and then the. And, and I'm sorry, I did have it on, on my one, and then the, the previous one, and then Cindy and I talked, and we adjusted. And we probably didn't carry it over.
It's just nice for, you know, when I go through my budgets and stuff, to know, um, who's bringing in the money and how much money they're bringing in.
Right.
Yes, yes. You're, yes, absolutely.
And we ma- honestly, we could have, um, we could, um, have more money in county title fees and administration fees. But like we've talked, Gary, um, I don't know what the state's going to do with some of the proposals that they've made. However, Sheriff Tom has graciously made some contacts, and they haven't gotten back to him yet.
Sure.
And Janice, um, on your three FTEs, I wasn't against them. I just wanted to see the numbers and everybody else's numbers before, you know, that I made a decision on the three FTEs. Um, I'm not against that because you do bring in revenues and stuff, so, for the record. Um, because of what you guys do and the revenues you bring in, it was just nice to see what everybody else was requesting and what your numbers were at the end of the year.
No, I, no, I understand that, Deb.
Janet, are most of your employees cross-trained?
Well, you know what? For the most part, yeah, yes, they are. But the problem is, you don't have time to cross-train them a hundred percent because of the lines and the mail. You know, the mail, the mail has increased so much. I have one employee right now that the only thing they do every day is America's mailbox. And she can't keep up with it anymore. So this morning, we, we did talk about it, and I said, you know, you're just going to probably have to tell them that they're not going to get their stuff the next day because we can't afford to pull another employee from the citizens that live here that are at the window and do all their stuff. And I know that probably doesn't sound very nice, but I know in many Haha County, unless they've changed their process, they make them stand in line, they do five, and they make them go back to the end of the line and wait to do the next five. So one gal, that's what she does totally, all day long. Plus the tons and tons of renewals. I mean, she's got, um, she got four pages of title transfers with titles to do. And everybody else from out-of-state pays a twenty-five dollar fee. But they don't because they don't put it in the mail. It's dropped off. And the law says specifically, it has to be in the mail. It has to come by mail. But we've seen an increase also, uh, last year, you know, there wasn't a lot of rentals. A lot of the rental companies from the airport weren't purchasing cars. They had no need to. Well, all of a sudden now, the cars are coming in, and they're trying to get everything transferred and get those plates on because they have a small window on what they can do as far as getting those plates on, or they have to pay tax on it. So as soon as they come in, we have to get them done. We have to get them in our office and out of our office. Because they might not even stay here. But the county does get our portion of the lien, we get the lien fee. If they have a lien, that's ten dollars. We get the extra five dollars title fee, which we never used to get before. So.
Nice.
And I think, did the one company, we've done over, what, two hundred and fifty cars, brand-new cars? Just for one company. And the other company, as soon as they get them in, there might be ten or fifteen one day, there might be thirty the next day. But. And quite frankly, for me to tell you that we got ninety-eight titles in in one day, that's the number of titles that came in the mail that had to be logged in, but that doesn't include they maybe didn't send half of the paperwork. Sometimes these people are contacted two and three times. We had a gentleman up there that was upset because he had penalty fees, and he said we never contacted him. But we log everything into our system, and it says, on this date we called you, you said you'd be in in two weeks. On this date we called you, you said you were going to make the finance company pay for the extra. So by the time it got done, it's been two months. So now he's got to pay all them penalties, but everything has to be logged so we know who spoke to him and on what date they spoke to him. But we do have some things in the works. It's just, um, there's just not a lot of people out there applying for jobs right now.
Afraid of.
But it'll get better.
We're finding that out.
So Janet, what's? What's the solution with this America's mailbox, or?
I, I don't know if there is a solution, Ron, because we're making money off of them.
Are we making enough, though? That's my question.
Well, the law says we can only charge ten dollars for a lien.
Well, you can go the pier again.
And we get all that, we get that ten dollars, and we get half of the money. Um, I am working with, um, a dealership and a couple legislators. Uh, they've got some ideas on stuff. I would like to see them increase the duplicate titles. That's ten dollars. The state gets all the money, and we do all the work. I've been told that, no, don't take a bill this year because it's not going to do you any good if it's a fee increase because the governor won't sign it. Well, but I've got some pretty influential people around Rapid City, the car dealerships that are going to work with me on some of this stuff, so. We're going to see what we can do because a lot of people will come and say, I need duplicate title, and they walk away, and they call two, about two hours later and say, oh, by the way, I just found my title, cancel that one. Once it's in the system, the state won't let us cancel them. And there's states that they're a hundred dollars. So if you had to pay twenty, twenty-five dollars, you'd go look for that title before you said, oh, I just lost it.
Yep.
So we are looking at some things. Some of them are in the work, and some of them the state doesn't know about yet, Gary, so I don't want to. I don't want to be on video stating what we're doing.
Any other questions, Janet? Thank you, Janet.
You have, Janet.
Thanks.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want to break?
Do you want to do the commission office budget quick?
Yep.
Is that on the list today?
You ain't even in the works, Holly, there. You don't get to. We're not going to let you do it easy. Because ours.
Hey, that just gets us out of here, Lloyd, right?
Uh, commission office budget
Yeah.
is very basic for twenty-twenty-two. Um, the increase comes from the additional FTE that was granted this year. Um, insurance went down. We're now based on actual for the seven individuals that are here, eight now. And I guess the only other expense that I will point out to the board is our mail machine has come to the end of its useful life, and we need to replace that. And instead of purchasing outright, I would like to enter into a lease agreement as the postal service is, uh, going to require a new and Daisha. And we don't know exactly what year that will happen. And so I don't want to go spend twenty-five grand on a new postage machine and then be out that investment if the post office says in three years you have to have this. So, um, if we do a lease agreement for the time being, we'll get the new machine if and when they decide that you want to put in the new requirement.
Has there been a lot of repairs on that?
So you put that in your, sorry, Lloyd?
Yes, that is in my, um, leasing. In, in the budget, yes.
Okay.
Under that service and fees is where you can see that increase in there.
Did you increase our, our, what were you make?
Um, Lloyd, sorry, just a second. To answer your question on the machine, we're starting to get to that point. Um, when we have a license plate year, it takes a beating from running all those license plates through. Um, it's still in good shape, but I just don't want to run into the risk of, of having it really go down and not being able to get replacement parts.
Yeah, I, I mean, sometimes lease, I think you, you're, you're making the right decision as far as knowing there's changes coming, but the leases will up, up, update that, but if there's problems, you got that covered, so it's not going to be, you know what you're, you can account your bills to every month for that.
Correct. Um, Commissioner Hickock, the increase in the salaries is just applying the county wage policy, which is one step for the employees. And then the commissioner's salaries, since the board has delayed the compensation study for the elected officials to occur with the other employees next time. Um, I just went based on my best educated guess, um, comparing like counties, um, populations. And I increased the commissions next year to twenty-eight thousand from twenty-four.
So Holly, a question for you, and this may be a legal question. Uh, you saw in, uh, State's Attorney's request talking about doing some advertising, uh, in, uh, one of the native newspapers. Can we, did you see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we, when we authorize, uh, right now, I, I think by law, we have to advertise in three publications. So can we substitute a publication for certain things like what the State's Attorney is proposing? Substitute that as a third one and eliminate one of the other three?
You can. Um. Pennington County, we have more than three legal newspapers, so the board could choose which ones they want to go with. Um, I will tell you, though, that the three that we have designated, Rapid City Journal obviously has the largest circulation numbers. Uh, the Current covers the eastern side of Pennington County, and the Hill City Prevailer covers the west. So geographically, everything is covered. Um, the other publication that they're using, the Native Sun News, in my opinion, just doesn't have the circulation numbers to make it worthwhile to designate them as a legal newspaper. Um, but certain statutes, you can use alternate legals for the second publication, or like State's Attorney, um, they feel that that one fits better with the type of publications that they need to do.
I think we need to keep that in mind when we go, uh, when we, uh, designate the legal publications for the next year.
Yeah, the board can certainly add four. I mean, that's just increasing expense, but different.
Well, but as, but as I'm understanding it, we wouldn't have to necessarily. We could substitute that one if that seems to be a more appropriate area in advertising in than the Rapid City Journal, for example. We could substitute that for certain things.
I wouldn't recommend dropping the Journal for the Native Sun News. You're talking sixty thousand in circulation numbers versus a couple of hundred. I'd have to look at their statement of ownerships again. But I wouldn't recommend that personally.
Just in the areas in the county that it makes sense, though, it'd be nice to subsidize it through the Native Sun News, meaning maybe care camp stuff or certain things that would actually be beneficial to the community it serves. Makes sense?
But we can look at any arrangement the board is interested in.
Just, just food for thought. Just like any publication we do.
Do we have to, can we do that at any time? Can we add or subtract?
You can add it anytime.
Can you? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Any other questions, Holly?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if you add one, is it, uh, is it a contract where you, you have to have them for a certain amount of time, or can you add them?
What, are we still talking legal newspapers?
I'm just talking about the legal paper. Is that a contract that you're entering?
No, statute is every year in January, the board will designate the three for the upcoming year.
Okay, I just wondered.
Can we just break, or we have to?
Need a motion.
You'll want to go on recess.
For recess.
For lunch.
For recess until, uh, I need a motion to recess until one-thirty.
So moved?
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Further discussion, all in favor, indicate a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, Mike Cool, Pennington County Buildings and Grounds. Get my stuff here. So, uh, our base budget, um, and we've, in following the direction of the board, uh, has increased, uh, basically due to, uh, we added two additional FTEs this year. Uh, our senior construction manager and a custodial supervisor. Uh, I thank the board for their assistance with that. That's, uh, is helping us progress in, uh, meeting demand. Um, and then also, then in the, uh, following direction relative to, uh, wages is what increased our, our budget amount, following, following the board's direction in regard to that. Are there any questions in regard to that? Okay. So on our.
It's good.
Um.
He just went over the first page, as always.
Yeah, just, I just started, I covered the, the base budget. Would, if you'd, uh, my explanation is that we hired two addition, we added two additional FTEs this year. Uh, our senior construction project manager and our custodial supervisor. And, um, then following board direction, that's the, relative to salaries for next year. That's what the additional cost relative to our budget is of, so, uh, of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Three point four percent increase rate overall?
Overall, correct. Uh, for our secondary budget, uh, with this year, we are requesting three additional FTEs for next year. Looking to fill, re- re- fill, uh, uh, we're calling it right now a mechanical foreman slot. We did not ref- fill that slot, uh, when our, uh, HVAC foreman, uh, retired last year at the early part of the pandemic in the beginning to help cut costs. Um, then we are also, I, I'm currently have, our, our intent is to utilize, we have that FTE open at this current time. We, our intent is to utilize it for a work coordinator. But we're, we are trying to get our, uh, our new soft asset management and accounting software up and running before we get too far into trying to hire that person.
Mike, with your HVAC. Is that going to be as more specialized than a normal HVAC person? I mean, with our cooling syst- old cooler systems and the new geothermal stuff, are, we're going to have to get somebody who's going to have to have a little more experience, well-rounded? Or do we have that on hand that could?
We, we, and we have, um, that, so, you know, um, knowledge base within the department now through, uh, Dave and, um, our other, other two, uh, HVAC specialists right now. Um, uh, we are, we do have a, uh, one of those specialists that's intending to retire this next year, so uh, we will be, uh, losing him.
Okay.
Uh, we are working towards trying to have, um, him still remain connected with, uh, uh, our department through working part-time in some way. Um, at least they have that additional support as we transition.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's good, but I think that's why I was wondering if he still had some more experience on hand. Just as we've talked earlier with, uh, working with Dakota, Western Dakota Tech to get people in and train them, I think that might be something good to start. If we have the, the not, people with the knowledge to be able to help train that person to get them up to speed in a couple of years, keeping somebody on part-time sometimes.
Yeah.
Sometimes after about a year, they're done with being part-time.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree. Um, the, uh, challenge we probably face relative, I, I, I am very interested in the, you know, trying to develop some type of participates in some way with, with that Western Dakota tech, uh, s- system there. The challenge that I think that we face there is that they train. The challenge that I think that we face there is that they train for residential.
Yep.
HVAC systems. Honestly, our expectation in trying to hire somebody is that that's what we're gonna end up with, is an HVAC, a residential HVAC person that, that we will have to begin to train up to, to be on our larger equipment.
And I think that training is gonna take at least two to three years at least, wouldn't it, or more?
It's, it will, it will take some time, yes. And looking at ways that we can assist in development of those people is something we're interested in. I'm also looking at hiring a building tech technician for the day shift to assist with the jail. As you're aware, the aging infrastructure over at the jail is, is something that demands a lot of attention, we are, and with our, if the, with the potential that jail infrastructure project moving forward, I'm gonna tie up probably our foreman in there a lot, just trying to help coordinate work relative to systems and it'll be a challenge, we, we don't want somebody going in and cutting part of the system out of it and then shutting down the building or something, so making sure that we have somebody who is knowledgeable about our systems in that building will be critical to how we execute that project. Then we are also looking for another building technician, just to help with overall general maintenance as, as things are increasing, with, with additional facilities coming online and such, we want to get some additional help with those.
So building technician, just, you're saying just understands the system and how it operates and what needs to be there?
The best way I could explain, our building technicians are handyman, kind of do a little bit of everything.
Okay.
So that, that goes all the way from material deliveries up through, they, they participate in our jail and on our on-call rotations, so they are, have experience working in the jail. Jail is the biggest driver of our on-call work, ninety percent of it is, is relative to the jail.
Jail takes a lot of their time away from a lot of the different buildings because there's always something going on there that they have to fix or maintain that, and I asked him, well, how to fix the solution on some of the stuff, and he said, well, how is it more people, he said, and make sure their pace is that they have ability. That's the main thing right now, is trying to find, they need at least three more, he said, just because of ability. A lot of times you're, you're having to train or, or do things, or people basically not very well trained.
It, it is, is getting increasingly difficult to get anybody who has any kind of skills. The way I always like to talk about our, our building technicians or something is kind of guys we love to get, those guys who grew up on a farm or ranch or something that can have learned how to, how to deal, are very mechanically inclined and can deal with about anything. At least they know how to think, they, they're accustomed to using tools, can take things apart, can reassemble things. Our specialists get more and they get more specific relative to systems, so.
In this case, like, we're building the ground, we're gonna fight for the buildings and grounds this year, just because, I keep saying, we keep increasing buildings and we keep increasing facilities in areas where we need to have more maintenance and more stuff done, but we don't have enough people to do it, but we have other people asking to expand and do some other stuff, well, if you don't get this department in order, you're not gonna be able to get those departments in order. I'll just tell you guys, if you already, I don't have to tell you that, but ask you that because it's getting to the point where we're adding more stuff than we are men and women to this department, and they're overloaded. We added two to help them, but Mike, one of those guys is not gonna ask you for something. He thinks he can just do it, I'm gonna speak for you, Mike, but I think, so I went and used the department and asked some of the people in there, what's the biggest issue here, and I said, we need some skilled labor and we need more people. You guys keep expanding these buildings, you want remodels, you want stuff, that jail and that, a lot of stuff, the sheriffs, not, nothing against the sheriff, just in general, his, his facilities take a lot of these guys' time out of all the other buildings. So what Mike's asking for you is, is for that maintenance guy, is for that person that can do with the jails, that's gonna take a whole, a huge load off them, so the other people can actually do the other facilities, so. We've increased a lot of people's FTEs over the years, but we have, look, his, even Mike Peterson, have been pretty tight on their FTEs. If anybody needs them more than anybody right now, it's these guys, because we're increasing everybody else's FTEs and remodels, but you're not finding the people that actually are doing the jobs, that's his partner right there. Plus, we wanna have a bigger building later, because pretty soon we're gonna go build this building, we're gonna need more people to even get ahead of that game anyway.
Thank you. If there's no further questions relative to FTEs, the, the rest of our budget is, is mainly been affected by the, the changes in the, relative to materials and, you know, our services, I'll, I'll go through these, service and fees, this is increased accommodating some, we're currently in the process of shifting our, our HVAC control systems and our access control and security, uh, security control, uh, security camera, that's for the most part is complete. So we have some changes of it will be occurring relative to service contracts with that, that amount is, is not, at this time, doesn't equal much, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Repair and maintenance, this line covers repair and maintenance work that we hire contractors or vendors to do. Because of increasing material costs, I feel like I have to try and build something in there, so we've tried to increase that number by ten percent. Overall, you've seen, lumber has started to, has been recovering, other materials probably will too, but in general, I think we're gonna see our, we're gonna see costs remain high. They go up, they've gone up fast, they tend to not come back down cost-wise very quickly.
Have you been able to get the materials you need?
What's that?
Have you been able to obtain materials that you need?
Um, we generally, I guess I'm gonna speak about our supplies with custodians and stuff, but everything is getting stretched out more in terms of, so far, relative to any projects we've been doing, it's, hasn't been that we haven't been able to get it, but how fast we can get something has really got stretched out.
Okay.
Custodial supplies, general supplies, this one has been a roller coaster ride all through last year and continues to be that way. I think that for some items that, you know, it was scary in the beginning is that we did not know if we were gonna be able to have, build, buy toilet paper or not, and jail uses a lot of toilet paper, so concerned about that, it had me, so I was reaching out to hotels and stuff to see whether they might be willing to sell their, sell their supplies, we were seeing challenges, so. We also had, when, when our, our biggest vendor just went out of the, out of business all of a sudden too, and so we were scrambling to try and find replacements for all of that. Rena Dick covered, did a lot of work trying to find new vendors and stuff for us to, to help maintain that supply. And we, we did things that probably people aren't aware of, but we tried to start building, tried to start building on the high demand items, a two-month supply of it. We, we have, hidden away, we have a two-month supply of toilet paper now, so, so that if we ever ran into a big problem, we, we have, and that's, it takes, two months of supply of toilet paper takes a lot of room, so. Rubber, latex gloves or something, I think we pay, we pay ten times?
Yeah, we used to pay two weeks.
Yeah. And that's a, that one's, hasn't changed, that one's a constant, that one's constant is trying to find, be able to find those is, is a constant work, so.
And we had a regular use of those before COVID.
What's that?
We had a regular use of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, a standing order of.
Jail.
What we did every, just for regular precautions every month, so.
Yep.
Jail uses a lot of them.
Jail uses a lot, our custodians use them as well, and so that would, gloves have been a big deal, masks and stuff were, were a big deal, every, everybody's experienced that and everybody's pretty much taken, been able to get their supplies and mask. We were fortunate that through, working through the sheriff's office or emergency management, they were able to help us get higher on the list of getting some things to help, so we do appreciate that assistance. We have also added some budget to cover, to help cover buying equipment and stuff for the new crisis stabilization. Now, I might think, we haven't worked through how that one will necessarily operate it yet, we don't expect it to be done till the, near the end of next year, but we have traditionally tried to outfit the buildings with some cleaning equipment and such for that, but in the end, we, we were expecting that to probably staff by somebody other than Buildings and Grounds. We'll maintain the building systems and such, but we're not looking at doing the custodial services for that, but as I said, those are things that need to be worked out yet. Maintenance supplies, construction related materials, as probably everybody realizes, have been, have been generally on an upward trajectory. Lumber seems to be starting to recover, but otherwise, most of them are still up, and we expect that they're gonna stay up for some time, till everybody gets kind of their operations running again, and there's some, a little more competition going on, so.
So when you use the word recover, you're saying supply is now there, or are the prices starting to come back down?
We have not, I, I think that there are problems with supply actually getting since we have not, other than when it comes more to custodial supplies, most of the materials, am I completely correct in that, is that we've been able to get pretty much, well, we did.
Some stuff we have to wait a couple of weeks, where before we would just go.
Yeah. We would gone through, we're doing that right now, currently trying to do a bunch of drywall repair work in the, in the jail, trying to find buckets of mud. Yeah. Was a big, big deal. We, we, our guys lucked out one day and a shipment had come in and we sent a truck up and loaded up with, on it and, and got some to try and help cover us, but it, it's, it's kind of sporadic like that with some things.
Yep, we were doing a row.
It's, yeah, it, it seems like the challenges are, is relative to organizations trying to come, come back up and their systems are so scattered in how they are and as they're trying to bring things back up, getting things done in a timely manner is, is, is something that's, it seems to be a challenge, so we continue to expect delays along those lines.
Mike, tell us about your secondary budget that we changed.
Well, that, relative to these items, fifteen percent is, that, that's our second, these items I'm discussing relative to these operational costs are where we spent money. We're not expecting utilities to go up a lot, but we have planned for some money at the end of next year to help cover costs for the crisis stabilization building. Capital assets, we are also asking, looking at, if you look at our, our vehicles that we currently have, they're all pretty old, we are hoping to maybe replace two vehicles next year, so we were asking for some additional money there. So relative to operations beyond, we're looking for an additional two hundred, almost seven thousand dollars.
So do you have your vehicles on any kind of a schedule, replacement schedule?
Uh, we do not currently, that's something we're trying to work towards.
Okay.
Overall, we're, we're seeking a increase of four hundred and fifty-two thousand and sixty-two dollars.
That's with the FTEs and everybody?
That would be with the FTEs and the, what we are increasing for, for operations.
That's your secondary budget, one?
Relative to our, the, the capital improvement money, we, we have been running, have been allocated eight hundred thousand dollars every year. Currently, the, the way that I've planned to utilize that money for next year is through a budget of money for a facilities need assessment. We'd like to replace two, two of our smaller boilers in the West Energy Plant, looking at rebuilding, re-roofing the Walter Taylor Building.
I don't, I don't want to interrupt, but I mean, I seen those, with these roof replacements, are the, any of these covered underneath their insurance?
I was gonna ask.
Well.
Or did we get some funds for this, because?
I mean, our, that, that roof is nearly twenty years old, our thought is not that we have anything, probably we're gonna recover from that, but we could check that and, and verify. This one is a, is a, we have problems with it relative to aging membrane, the, because the way the building is constructed, we have some slope issues on it.
Is that, that building's really old too, though, isn't it? Two hundred and ten thousand?
Well, I mean, I, that's a, roofing is really expensive right now.
And that, that building's not like shingled, that's the, the vinyl, isn't it?
That stuff like I have on mine.
It's a PVC roof.
Yeah, because you go a little further down, we got JSC, too, that I wouldn't have thought JSC would have had some insurance.
I thought we just, we did not too long ago.
Well, the, what, this is something that started under Mike, what Mike started doing is replacing pieces of that roof over time, so what we're doing is trying to continue with that, we have two, basically two sections of roof that need to be replaced yet on that one.
So that's your whole eight hundred thousand?
Yes.
Do any kind of extra stuff for other people?
Smoke control is, uh, JSC is another item that we'd like to get completed, but I'm all, I'm counting on getting half of that money from, from their operations out there.
Bottom line, usually this money was used for other projects instead of for what he was supposed to, like his list, it was taken for finishing up some of the other projects that were done in the county that had nothing to do with buildings and grounds, roofing and HVAC and all that stuff, you guys, just food for thought. That's why the capital improvement or the, the reserves need to be a little bit different because that's what buildings, we believe, with the bylaws that we're setting up, that that's the money that the committee should use and not that eight hundred thousand to help fund projects that are, you know, not already on the list. That's why we have separated it out by numbers on the secondary budget, if you look at that, where we put maintenance, repairs and maintenance, different supplies and materials, and then reserve accumulations and service and fees on page, I don't know, it's four two two, four two five, four two six, four five four, and four five nine. and service and fees on page, I don't know, it's four two two, four two five, four two six, four five four, and four five nine for twenty twenty-two. Because it's been misappropriated in different areas instead of used for what it was supposed to be used for. We broke it down in the bylaws that we're working on with Holly and Jay and with Mike to figure out how you keep it in his budget, and people can't use it on accumulated building for their projects, only for stuff that your buildings and grounds or your new senior project managers deem necessary, instead of a cumulative or building committee using it for their needs.
So what we're trying to figure out is a way that we can address some of the. Protect, have some protected money relative to, I like to term, use the term capital renewal and replacement. How do we, how do we continue to reinvest in our buildings, our our systems to to keep them up and going? For so like doing boiler replacements, roof replacements when they're, when they come due.
What we're using it for is like to finish the care campus or to finish a jail. Stuff like that, yep. Fairgrounds.
So the, having having some protected money that can be used relative to. Those upgrades and replacements and stuff is something that I'm interested in trying to establish. We've also talked about having a a component, maybe five hundred thousand dollars. We're trying to figure out what what is appropriate amount that would be available to do, take care of some minor remodel projects or something to to address needs or something. My my thought generally is that I would like to. Have departments involved in finding the funds to do those sorts of things, just so that. I like to term it in terms of having skin in the game, in terms of of trying to get things done like that.
So you're talking about unscheduled projects, things that come.
Yes, yep. And then, I guess the other thing is that we're trying to establish an amount, how much we should put, recommend to put back into accumulated building. As a, as a buffer, as a reserve, and for having, as David indicated, having some money available for a larger project that the building committee could make determinations about. Two million dollars, I think the way we've discussed it so far is, you know, basically a million dollars at least for a a buffer. And in the in the beginning, having a million dollars to start, have available for some kind of scheduled project, at least the start of it. Of course, you're aware that large projects take a lot, can take a lot more money than a million dollars. But it's something there to to start working from. The idea is that any money that we can't spend or utilize to for upgrades or something will help start to build that kind of up as well in a year.
So bottom line, guys, what we did, and I asked Gary if if it was something we needed, was to do a bylaws committee on bylaws for buildings and grounds, because it seems like when you're in buildings and grounds, it's just all over the place, and there's not really a process. So we wanted to determine Chairman Gary, Mr. Drews, and me and Holly and Jay and Mike, a process of which buildings and grounds works, and these three pots of money or these money changes were based on that as well. Because there's really not a process in which we do projects, there's not a process in which you submit projects. So I'm not saying it up straight, Holly went through most of this for us and did amazing job, so we'll be bringing that to you guys. Of responsibilities and duties, project reward and prior prioritization process. You will be submitting at a certain date, we're trying to figure out if it's October first or November first, a certain time when you would submit your project as a building director or department head. Instead of what's happening is they're just coming in and saying, I need, we need the remodel here, we need a remodel here, and now we have a campus stabilization unit or crisis stabilization unit. Then, Mike, could you go ahead and figure out what's happening with the jail, and then we want the public safety building redone? And then in between there, go do all your maintenance stuff and do what you're doing still, like you just said, with the jails and everything else, in between all these projects. So it came to the point that every week we'd have the same things, and people were like, this never changes. Well, it it never changed on buildings and grounds, because some of those projects shouldn't have been in buildings and committee in the first place. Anything like the the roof replacement and some of that other stuff shouldn't have had to went to the building committee. So we're trying to establish a process where Mike can actually do his job and not have to bring anything to the building committee, but the building committee would be and have a separate pot of money that they couldn't go into his money and like we have been in the past and drain his budget for anything he needs for his buildings and grounds or for his facilities. So that's why when you're seeing that separation in the pots, and then a separate pot of money for building committee of the two million or one million, whatever you guys decide, that can be used unless people want to bond, or if we do a big enough project, that that building committee will decide on bonding or bigger projects. They shouldn't be deciding on, oh, well, I should say, if Mike comes back and decides that something needs to be decided on because it's bigger than he thought, he could still do that. But the bottom line is, is he's trying to run a department with five, eight, ten other department heads wanting other needs when, you know, they keep voting on him and saying, that's a great idea, go ahead and do that, Mike. But there's not really a process, meaning it's just brought up, and here you go, Mike, do another one. So there's got to be a prioritization, there's got to be a committee that says, okay, Mike, first you got these three, and right now you'll have a project manager that says, no, we can't take on any more projects right now, instead of just let people really, really just bring more stuff to them and say, hey, Mike, you aren't getting enough stuff done, you aren't going fast enough for me. That's what I keep hearing, it's not getting anything done, well, he's overwhelmed.
Well, I. I guess that, you know, the way that I I would like to state that is that we are, why some things like roof projects and stuff, we started becoming on the on the agenda and stuff is start trying to make people aware that there's a lot of things that are going on beyond just major facility projects that people would like to see done. So currently, you know, we have crisis stabilization, the jail project, and the lamp lighter demolition and parking lot construction. Relative to the way we are staffed currently, that's a, that's a lot to carry plus everything else right now. So we're just trying to figure out a way that we can start finding these things out, figuring out how to have a plan, make, and maybe make some decisions about whether we are going to move forward with projects or not. I can tell you that going through and doing another facility assessment and getting some documentation done, and understanding needs on a broader basis will will be very helpful to the county overall to understand how that, we can put together projects or something that meet a number of needs. We can, we can work through trying to address probably some of the projects, needs that you've heard about so far. We can take care of those, what they are, what I tell you is that they look, they're likely bandages that to put something, we can, we can get by for another five or so years or something, and we need to be starting to look at what the next big thing is on the horizon, so.
Mike, at this point, we already got to buy about five years, and we've expanded out of the building already. So I think when you're doing a facility needs, most people, I don't know if they do ten, twenty years of what's going to happen. I mean, you don't want to build a huge building that's half empty, I understand. But what's happening is this building got full, and it just keeps getting fuller and fuller, and we just add more FTEs with no room to add the FTEs. So I'll keep saying, guys, what's the next step? Because if you want to add four more FTEs to each department, and they already are full right now, and they need a remodel, what's going to happen in the next? If if you keep saying crime is going up, or or, you know, in Janet's case, she has a lot more more people because of the process and what's happening, and we're going to have more people come to Rapid City, what's our bottom line? What, where are we going? Because you can't just keep, like you said, banding in it, and that's not going to happen, that's going to happen before, I truly believe, before five years. Because you're going to need, planning partners are going to need bigger pretty soon, and auditor is going to need to expand, and if she doesn't already, I think she said she needs to. You see what I'm saying, buildings and grounds, they already passed where they should be. So, I mean, where are we going? And and how are we going to plan for the future, and what is that plan? Is that a facility, I I don't know, Board or Mike, what is, what is it? Is it a facility needs assessment, or is it, what what is that to know where we're going for?
It is the facilities needs assessment that needs to be done.
Right.
And there's probably one that was done prior to this building being built, and I'll have to look at Holly to see if there was one. It can work off of that, and as was stated this morning, this building was designed originally for the future. But at the end, it was redesigned downward to handle immediate needs. And so, yes, we certainly have to look at where we expand and what we can do.
Is there like areas, maybe Mike knows, is there areas in the courthouse? I mean, we could have this discussion in buildings and grounds, but I mean.
Well, I think that's what you do, is I think you have that discussion in buildings and ground, in your buildings grounds committee. And that's what I suggested this morning, is get together with the courts, see if they have some available space over there that we can utilize and free up space in this building. So I think that's a discussion that needs to be held.
Well, and just, and just food for thought, while you're adding the FTEs and and remodels, how much does that cost? And and is that an immediate need, or is how long does it take to figure out what that expansion is going to be? I mean, what's it going to cost you before and after? Instead of remodeling, putting somebody somewhere else? That maybe we have an area for, I don't know what that's, crisis stabilization, I don't know, taking that and making it bigger or something now for some other need that's can be somewhere else, I don't, I have no idea, but I'm just saying. You're going to build a four point six million dollar building, maybe that's where you do some of the expansion or something beforehand, but.
Well, it's not going to be four, six, last I heard it was five, six, and probably increase.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
This is the first time I've heard of the retracting of the ordinance, so the building committee, all this stuff, this is the first time I've heard of this. But I I do know three or four years ago, we'd asked you come up with a priority list, our top things to work on, and we had that list, and I know it had to do with the coolers, and we had certain ones. And where are we with that, that list? Did we fall short because Peter was Robin Paul, or what?
Oh, there there's some of that, yes, in regard to that, we have, we're facing challenges relative to how much work is going, you know, how much work we can manage at one one time going forward. Having an additional project manager will help with that, so.
And the reason why I bring this up, you know, I know buildings and maintenance are, it's, sometimes you have to do that. It it's a matter of, one day you come in, you're working on this, and then you have to go over and concentrate on this, and I put this on hold. I I do that all the time, our our group does. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast, you have to take care of your immediate needs. And I understand what you're talking about, we need to have that reserve, and we do that type of stuff. But I I just wanted to clarify that, that's the nature of the beast with, when you come with buildings, you have to deal with the emergency stuff right away. And one concentrate on one thing may seem important today, but two weeks from now, we have to change it because something happened. HVAC is a prime example, you know, that's a lot of money to have to all of a sudden. In fact, our Pennington County, our building on La Crosse.
Yep.
AC went out on that two weeks ago, we don't own no more.
And think about it, Lloyd, we 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 made this building for what, I heard fourteen million, but we still have, what, infrastructure over there at the old building for another, what, I don't know, eighteen million? So some of that, people just kept putting on hold until the point that it it's not a major issue. So some of that, we just got to try to get ahead of that game a little bit better if we can. And make priorities a little bit different, so.
Our intention is to try and figure out a way to to work through this, but my my, and we we don't want to dump it on the commission to figure out what the solution is, but we need, you know, an assessment needs to be done, I I feel, to understand where needs are, as you've heard and stuff. Spaces have filled up faster than expected, and and it seems like we're just hearing a little bit more and more all the time that there's, they're close to needing more space or need it right now. And trying to figure out how to, how to handle that.
Any more you need to share of this, Mike?
Not unless you have any questions.
Any further questions, or Mike?
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Joe Miller, Highway, Joe left. He doesn't want to make a presentation?
Told you there was emergencies.
He went and got a boat.
You're up, Joe.
Thank you.
It raining that hard?
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. Oh, so I guess I will start with kind of our project list here that we've got put together in front of you, and kind of follow the memo along there. Sheridan Lake Road, well underway, we're in our second year of construction. Again, this year, we probably won't see any budgeted dollars come out of this twenty twenty-one's budget. The majority of this will, Sheridan Lake Road for the county's portion will come out of our twenty twenty-two budget. That's why you see eight and a half million dollars in our budget for Sheridan Lake Road. Even with the the federal dollars that we've repurposed, that'll be the county's share in twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions on Sheridan Lake Road?
Any questions?
Okay, next one, Deadwood Avenue, this has been on the books for quite some time. We we still have one landowner that we need to acquire right away from, the project's estimated at about one point two million dollars. It's a joint effort between the city, and that one point two million dollars is our share of the project. I did receive a call from the landowner, they are back in South Dakota finally after COVID. They were down in Arizona for quite some time, so they're back up here, so we're going to try and get together, and it worked out the right of way deal, so this project can hopefully move forward in in twenty twenty-two.
Is that the only thing holding that project up at this point?
Yes.
So the city is ready to go on their portion?
Yep, so and this landowner actually has land abutting the the city portion and the county portion. So both the city and the the county need right away from him. The city has tasked us with doing the right of way negotiations for them as well with this landowner, so. Yeah, once we get the land, or once we get the the right of way figured out, we, this project should be able to move forward to bidding relatively quickly. Are there any questions on that? All right, South Rochford Road, we've we've been having bi-week, bi-weekly meetings on this project for, oh, I think January is probably about when we. meetings on this project for, oh, I think January is probably about when we started those, um, just to try and move these, this project forward. We've got a list of, uh, items at each entity, or what needs to take place to, to get this project to bid letting. Um, the right-of-way negotiations are complete on this project. Uh, so that's another step in that direction. Currently, right now, we're in, uh, waiting for an MOA from the, to be signed by the tribes. Uh, the federal highway has reached out to them. Uh, we're working through that process. It's, it's a lengthy process. We're still hoping, probably a fall bid letting for this project for construction in '22. Whether that's, uh, hopes and dreams or factual, it's yet to be seen. You know, the, uh, working with the tribes and, and the federal government can be, uh, time-consuming, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, construction could possibly begin in 2022, but the different items that could hamper that would be the tribes?
Yeah, I don't have the list in front of me here. There's, uh, there, the tribes, and then the Forest Service, uh, letter of consent is the two most time-consuming portions of that.
So, uh, worst-case scenario, uh, 2023?
I would say worst, absolute worst-case scenario. We're working hard to, and the state's working hard, the federal government's working hard, Forest Services, working hard to keep this at the top of everybody's to-do list. I mean, it's, what is it, 19 years in the making?
I think they just want to see an even 20.
I, I would keep it at 19. I hate odd numbers, but I think the sooner the better.
I prefer 19, too, so.
So, Joe, you know, if, there was a, I can't remember the guy's name, that can help get the, the signatures of the tribes. Have we reached out and had a conversation?
I, I did reach out to the state. I wanted to make sure we weren't gonna step on anybody's toes and make sure we're gonna go through the process right.
Yep.
Um, and the state felt that we, it's not the county's place to, to get into that. We need to leave it with the federal government, since the tribes are, are their own entity, and they work together. Um, that's where the state felt it needed to be.
I find that odd, because the guy was from the tribe.
Right.
I mean, that's kind of like...
He, he was the, you know, he was the, the point of contact, um, or used to be, and then we have, now we have a new one. So I don't know if they felt that maybe there might be some conflicting interest there, or, you know, him stepping on the new person's toes, or, or what. But, um, the federal government is, is, with COVID, kind of subsiding and going, restrictions being lifted, um, they're going back to how it used to be. Basically, they've got a certain amount of time to respond.
Okay, so I guess that's what we need to kind of understand, is that what you're gonna do is send letters again, just like you do to anyone else. And from my understanding, a lot of these letters get sat on a desk, and there's so, so many. I mean, I'm not blaming or shaming anybody, it's just that they get one from, from team, so a person slips for a week, you can lose it probably. That's why I suggested, if you have a person that could go have the contacts.
Right.
Puts it to the, brings it to their attention. But if they want to go to the point where they want to go back to the old system, just hope that there's no response, and then write them off.
And that's...
That's their deal, I guess.
And that's what, uh, that was the talk at our last meeting, is that's what, the direction we're moving.
That, that time limit's probably, so what you're doing is, you send it out, and you got, what, 90 days to reply, 180?
I don't know. The talk was 30 days.
Okay, 30, okay.
Uh, with the funding part, uh, of South Rochford, so with the repurposing of, uh, the, the federal funding to Sherden Lake Road, um, we'll get a bill in '21 here to pay off that remainder, so then the whole 8, 8.2 will go to Sherden Lake Road, um, and then we'll have an SIB loan, or a state infrastructure bank loan for the completion of South Rochford Road. With that, that will be the funding that they use in '22 or '23, whenever this project gets underway. So we won't have to, there won't be any money coming out of the county budget until the, the second year of that project. Are there any questions on that, on South Rochford? All right. Uh, the next one is a project that's been kind of in the works since, uh, 2019 in our flooding. Uh, Willsey Road realignment. This is basically, uh, the road that fell into the Cheyenne River in 2019 due to the flooding. Uh, this would be a project to realign that, now that we've got the FEMA funds. Um, we, we'll, you'll be seeing a, an agreement for, uh, the design of this, um, so we can get this project to let, letting, and, uh, proceed with the construction in '22. With that, that should sum up, uh, our major road projects. Are there any questions on those?
I guess the only one I got, going back to the South Rochford Road, are we still talking about the same profile, the same width, uh, with asphalt?
Correct, yes. Yeah, I believe it's a, we went down to a two-foot shoulder, so I think it's a, a 28-foot road top, two 12-foot lanes with four foot, or two-foot shoulders on either side.
Okay, I just wondered if that was still gonna be somewhat consistent with what it originally was?
Yep. We haven't changed the, the, the road design.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I can get into our, uh, bridge funding. Um, so with the passage of the wheel tax in 2020, thanks to Chairman, uh, Gary for spearheading that, and the commission for, for getting that in place. Um, we did receive our, uh, a big fund in 2021, in the amount of, uh, $470,600 for structure 316-316 on Thunderhead Falls. Um, to date, Holly, I think the most recent spreadsheet we've got is May, correct, for the wheel tax?
We are at... Uh, we've collected $623,000 so far.
Yeah, so we've collected $623,000, and our projected was 1.3. So we're approximately about 50% ahead of what we thought we were gonna collect on that. Um, hopefully it'll hold true coming June, July, um, you know, and we can continue forward with that. Back to my spreadsheet here. Um, so our plans for, for structure 316-316, uh, we applied for two fun, or two bridges on, on, to, for big funds this year, uh, both on Thunderhead Falls. One of them we, we received funding for, one of them we did not. Um, our plan is to possibly up our percentage increase, to increase our points, um, to try and move that up the, uh, up the list, and hopefully get some funding for it. Either way, we've put money in our budget to get both of these bridges constructed in 2022. Um, from what our understanding with this, talking with the state, we can actually let these two bridges as a project. The county would just have to pay for the one. Um, so our thought process there is, we'll only have to pay for one mobilization instead of two on both those bridges. So we should get a, a better price if we were able to let both of those bridges at the same time, rather than one at a time and two separate projects. Uh, the other bridge that we got on the, uh, on the deck for 2022 is Sunquist Lane. Uh, we've got authorization to let that in fall of 2020. Um, as soon as we got the authorization, there was, uh, the engineer that designed it said, oh, hey, by the way, you need some right-of-ways. So we've been in talks with, uh, the landowners, Sean, with, we've got one left. They're ready to sign, basically, right? So we should have the, uh, the right-of-ways secured, you know, this summer, and be able to go to, to bidding for Sunquist Lane project, uh, bridge project this fall. Uh, we've budgeted a half million dollars for that project. Um, hopefully it'll come in under, uh, big funding for 2022 that we planned. We're currently in the design phases for Sherman Street Bridge in Silver City, the bridge going into Silver City. Um, we've put $600, $600,000 in the budget for that. Um, we apply, we plan to apply for, for big funding for that project also. Terminal for bridge replacements in, uh, Pennington County, the, for 2022, where we plan to spend a total of about two and a half million dollars, so, um, putting that wheel tax to good use. With that, is there any questions on, uh, bridges?
No questions.
Okay. Uh, next up is our capital outlay. Uh, so we're continuing to follow our equipment, uh, replacement plan that was approved by the board in 2019. Um, so this year, it includes purchases for two motor graders, uh, one truck, one loader, uh, for a total of $819,000. Um, our shop foreman found a, uh, grant, um, put together by the South Dakota Department of, let me see if I can get this right, Department of Agricultural Natural Resources, um, has put that together through Volkswagen, um, to, basically, if we have a truck that meets certain criteria that we can render inoperable, and drilling a hole in the block, um, that we can get up to 50% of the, of a new truck paid for. Uh, we haven't received any information if we've been successful on that, but we've also put money in our, our capital outlay budget for that, um, in 2021. Is there any questions on our capital outlay? Um, next one is, uh, road and bridge maintenance. We're gonna continue our crack seal and chip seal, approximately 30 miles, um, and then our pavement marking program also that the state's putting on. The pavement marking program is changing a little bit in '21. They're, they're look, they're doing some different types of paints that'll hopefully last a little bit longer, so we don't have to, to stripe every year. So that, uh, 2021's project's getting started a little bit late here. They're looking to get started after the 4th of July. Um, and then, uh, also in the, the budget, we've got, uh, $250,000 for bridge repairs. That's just double T replacements, rehabs. Um, specific bridges have yet to be determined, uh, on that. So with that, that's, uh, all I've got, unless you want me to go into the secondary budget, too.
Questions, Joe? Require a crew?
If you're out from this morning. All right.
Thank you, Joe.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Brittany?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brittany Mulliter, Planning Director. So I'll just go over some basics of our base budget. Our actual base budget for this year is, uh, about 0.36% less than last year. Um, some of the significant changes in the budget, um, we do have some salary increases, just because there's potential reclassifications in our office. As you know, when we redid our, um, employee, um, process and our flow chart, and the ability for, uh, people to become reclassified, so there are some opportunities for a couple employees to reclassify into higher, um, classifications. Um, one of the other reasons our budget went down is our group insurance. Um, several members of our staff, um, do not take the insurance for the county. Um, so that is part of that, um, reduction. Um, also, um, as you know, uh, our office has seen significant growth in the number of building permits and requests. Um, I did submit, uh, a graph on that second page of the memo, um, showing just some of the building permit trends, and some of our permit application trends this year in comparison to, uh, previous years. And we are well above, um, what we were at this time last year, and what we are projecting for, um, 2022, with the potential growth, uh, in the county and the additional subdivisions. Um, I believe we'll see a significant increase in the number of building permits and permit applications. Um, so that's basically my base budget. There's not a whole lot of change in it. Um, so if there's any questions.
So Brittany, if marijuana's passed, are the permitting fees and stuff, that won't be any changes for, for next year, or 2022, or you're not looking into that?
So we didn't put any, anything in that, in the budget for 2022, um, until we know, um, basically where our ordinances will go, um, with that. Uh, I know that the, the place that we're going to visit, Adams County, their program is self-sufficient, so their license and their permit fees, um, basically support whatever staffing and requirements.
Did you think about that? If that all comes to pass, too, your staff, staffing's gonna change as well, meaning your staffing needs, I believe, will probably change in a certain extent, won't it?
It could. It will depend on this commission and the number of licenses and permits that they'll allow, um, in the county. So if there's one license, it would be different than if there's five or 10. Uh, so that oversight, so that's why the staffing levels, I didn't take that into account in 2022, because we just don't know the number of licenses that'll be, and what that ordinance will look like right now.
Just, just a heads up, and some of that, in some of our departments, that some of those changes might be affected by some of the marijuana rules and regulations passing. And then tattoo licenses, we do tattoo licensing in the planning department?
We do. We have, since I have been here in the last 15 years, I believe. Um, yes, our code enforcement officer does all of the inspections of the tattoo facilities.
Well, I, I didn't know that.
You know, it'd be nice, after you guys get your visit, to kind of give us an idea of, of what's happened in that county, how many people have applied for those licenses, what, I mean, it'd be just nice, some information, you pass that on to us after you go visit. I think, you ain't going by into this month, or?
We are actually going the 12th of July, so our visit is the 13th and 14th.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just interested, because you're visiting that place for the fact that the same, about the same population and size, isn't that what, why you're true to that area?
They're a larger population, but they have a similar demographic to us. Um, so they have a large area of, um, agricultural property with city centers. Um, I would say their overall county population is a little over a half a million.
Okay.
Um, so it's a little smaller than ours. Um, they did have a pretty conservative approach at looking at licensing within their county. Um, we did do a Zoom meeting with them, um, for about two and a half hours. Um, they did take a very conservative approach. Their recommendation to us was to limit the number of licenses, have something in place, uh, be prepared. There were some other counties in Colorado that were not prepared, and it was somewhat of a free-for-all. Um, so it's difficult to backpedal through that. Um, so they have, they have a really good program. Um, they've done a really good job of, um, vetting some things out, um, being somewhat conservative in their, in their permitting process, um, and having a lot of oversight of that process, so.
Because that, is that gonna include inspections and so forth?
Yes.
So I could, I mean, you're gonna have to keep up on inspections.
Yes, there is, will be a staff member, and actually the person that would potentially do that, he is also going with, um, and meeting with the Adams County inspector.
Lloyd, you can't grow that big grow plant in your barn in Keystone anymore?
Wouldn't want to.
I'm kidding. Didn't you have a three-car garage or something there, didn't you, in vacation home rental? Lloyd?
He's ignoring you. You have more, Brittany?
Yes, and just the secondary budget, um, I did request a three-quarter time employee, that employee would not have benefits. Um, the purpose of that employee would be to help out with some administrative, um, duties in the office. Uh, right now, we have one administrative assistant. Um, when she was originally hired, we only had five employees, including herself. Now we're up to nine. Uh, the number of files, and the number of permits, the number of phone calls has increased significantly in our office. Uh, so we are looking at, um, having some help for her. We currently have a, a temporary, like seasonal person right now that's working and doing, scanning all of our building permits, and getting everything digitized and into our track-it system. So everything will be available electronically. Um, that position sunsets, um, in December of this year. Um, I would like to just carry her over into that position, um, if it is approved. Um, she does have experience in the office, uh, so there will be very little learning curve. Um, she's very much a value-added employee for what we would get, um, to help out with the office.
So are you current on your, on your scanning? Are you just saying you're scanning future needs at this point in time, or you still got a backlog?
Scanning everything.
If you got a backlog of stuff, or?
Yes, we have building permits that go back to the 70s and 80s.
Okay.
So she's scanning everything, um, that we have in the office.
So Holly, can we get a handle on how many departments need to have things digitized? Uh, I'd be interested in two things on it. First of all, how much storage is it taking currently, uh, to store that stuff? And I take it from the state's attorney's office that... And I take it from the state's attorney's office that theirs is actually off site and maybe some of the others is off site too.
They're paying a monthly, if I understand, to store it somewhere off site, yes.
So let's see if we can get some numbers on that and see how many departments actually have that kind of need for digitizing materials.
Yeah, because I Brittany, do you remember our conversation last year on? Because that's what we were just talking about earlier today. I don't know if you heard that, but when we approved that person to scam for you, we thought last year that it was going to be like halftime or something like that.
It is halftime. It's twenty hours a week.
And I think the future was to help out some other departments, but it may maybe worth two, I don't know.
Yeah, we just had, we're getting filing cabinets are taking over our office space. So that's part of the reason we need to get some of this stuff digitized. And it's a service to the public because it's, we had a lot of builders, realtors, homeowners that call in and want copies of permits. So now we won't have to go to a file cabinet, scan it in and send it via email. It'll be a quick download in an email. And then eventually, once they can have access to our track it system, they can download and access it on their own. So for the secondary budget, that was one. And then the other major was another vehicle. We did have a vehicle that was totaled out back in two thousand and eighteen that was never replaced. We do have two field employees that use vehicles predominantly all the time. So that leaves one vehicle right now between a building inspector, our erosion sediment control inspector and all of the planners to do site visits. So we're just asking to essentially have that vehicle that was totaled replaced.
It wasn't replaced, Brittany, at the time.
It wasn't. It was, we just had liability on it, so there wasn't any.
So you didn't ask for another vehicle the next year?
We did not ask for one at that time. We're asking for fifteen thousand just for the used SUV, something small that would be easy to get around in the hills and for them to utilize. So that's all. Do you have any questions?
No more questions, I don't think. John, can you come up and answer a couple of insurance questions? You got you got Cindy's backup in here. So on our vehicles, do we have strictly liability on all vehicles that the county has?
It varies by department. They determine what coverages they want.
The department does?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, so we have a list of vehicles that have full coverage. We have a list of vehicles that just strictly have liability.
Okay, so on a full coverage vehicle that's damaged, when insurance is collected, are those proceeds then go back to the to the department?
Well, the way I understand it, they come back into the county and the department has to request those funds back into their budget for replacements. I could be way off. That sounds correct.
Okay. Mark, Mark went up for you.
We have a number of older vehicles in our fleet, I mean, old vehicles.
I understand that, yeah.
So they don't carry full coverage, so. I suggested actually some of our older vehicles that we still have maybe carry different coverages last year. The departments are pretty set on what they cover and how they cover it. So I think as I learn more about our our coverage plans, I might be able to help them make decisions that could be more helpful for their budgets or for the county. Or to make sure that in cases like this where one was destroyed, that we have a plan in order to replace it at that same time.
Okay, so is this same same way with with structures and so forth? Like the Walter Taylor Building, is that roof, was that originally damaged by storms or?
I I can't say because it's not a claim that's come to me. The only claim I've got on property so far has been the barn off the the stalling barn at the fairgrounds. Anything that happened prior to that, I don't have any information.
Okay, so and there was no funds collected on that because that was under the the amount was under the deductible?
Twenty five thousand deductible. They estimated it twenty three thousand and change. So it ends up coming back to us. If we have a larger dollar amount in actual repairs, then we can go back to the insurance company and say that the actuals were higher than their estimate.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, we're we've decided internally to repair it ourselves. So at this point, actually, John from the fairgrounds said that he is going to find a way to have that repaired.
Okay.
I spoke with him just a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so another other damages that are caused. Does any of that money find its way back to buildings and grounds then without them requesting it for work? Or does do they request it? I mean, if if there's damage to this building right here, which we would anticipate buildings and grounds would take care of, does that money go directly back to them or?
Comes back to the county again. So the the county is the insured, not any of the individual departments. So as we have those claims and any kind of money that's recovered, it comes back and whatever does come back then could be requested to as a supplement back into the departments.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
John, if we have a weather event and a building's damaged, who's responsible for calling the insurance company so that they have a date of that incident?
So that's a great question. In the past, it's been a variety of people and there's not a single process. So we started looking at that this year to try to determine what that looks like. All claims have been now funneled to me and then I send them over, liability claims, property claims, anything else. The vehicles through the sheriff's office are being turned in by Tom. And then he copies me on those claims, so we have a history of of the damages and whatnot there. The sheriff also does an amazing job of actually investigating the causes of those those vehicle claims. Anything else that does come through our H on office and then I contact the insurer.
So my question was in two thousand and eighteen, that two thousand and ten Dodge was totaled. I just wondered if that was insured for if it was, you know, there was other insurance other than liability.
I, again, I wouldn't know at that point. I know about the incident. I wasn't working with insurance.
We might not have had full coverage on that.
Yeah, I I don't know. It was an older pickup from what I understand and they had not had anything else. But I don't have the the rest of the data on that claim. I have the employee's information, but nothing there.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, Lori, Information Technology.
Hey, you're walking pretty good.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Lori Wager, Pennington County IT. So I sent a memo out with my budget and I think I pretty much covered everything where the costs differ. Other than that, if you have questions in regards to that, we can discuss it. But I do want to say I'm not requesting additional space, nor am I requesting additional FTEs at this time.
Now, the question is, will you give us some additional space?
But because of all the changes and all the buildings and all the additional FTEs, IT will be looking at probably in two thousand and twenty three at least, asking for another FTE. What does that mean for our space? We have talked about it and we do have thoughts of where we would put those that additional person at. We'd have to do some remodeling, but other than that, right now, we're okay. So we're fully staffed. We have all thirteen positions covered right now, which is the first since I have been director. So that's been kind of nice to know that that's going to be a full full house now. Other than that.
I think you're our favorite department right now.
Oh, really? Because I'm the littlest?
Lori, on this cybersecurity, you guys got a grant on that.
Yes.
And so, I mean, that's getting to be a huge thing these days.
It's it's always huge talk and especially after, you know, the last year with COVID and everything, it was, it's huge talk. Mike and his team do really good with covering all of our needs and in that aspect. I feel good about it. The grant money that we got, we're replacing our baracudas ban filter and our firewall, which we were intending on replacing this year anyways. We had put it in, you know, for our reserves and and it's just nice to have the grant money. Now we can use the extra for other projects, so.
I got some weird messages from Chairman Drew one time, so.
Oh, yeah. They tag on a lot of stuff. They work pretty hard to make our lives a little miserable.
I bet.
And then we have departments that want to be able to access websites that are in Korea and.
So I know in the last couple of years, you've worked pretty hard on giving some of these departments to get their own purchased programs instead of you developing them and trying to monitor them and rework them and so forth. Could you explain to me a little bit? I mean, I I understand why a person wants to do it. It's a specialized program. It's easier to maintain.
Right.
I think you got one in your secondary, not secondary budget, but.
I don't have a secondary budget.
But someone else has requested one to help with the auditors or?
Yes, so software, writing software for the county was a big thing because they always wanted something specialized. But to have a software like the real estate tax software, the assessment, not the assessment portion of it, but the maintain and the parcels, that's huge. That's huge software. And you you see companies with multiple employees building that software and keeping up with the times and keeping up with the new technology to keep the software, you know, up to the current. And we just can't do it in our department anymore. It would require so many people. And every time you have somebody leave, it it took me like, I want to say, three to five years to really grasp the whole tax cycle, how it all happens from valuation time to the tax collecting to the tax sale and the whole cycle that it goes through. So we really need to just try to focus on making our users' lives happier or easier by doing little programs. Like, for instance, we have a really little one over in the jail for the menu. We call it the kitchen menu, but and they'll call it the apple. But if they'll send a tray, they send their trays up to the different cells and those cells get the trays and they're missing something off of a tray. They key into this application, what they need, that bounces back down to the jail and they can send it up. No picking up the phone, no, you know, it just makes their lives a lot easier. So little things like that really improve the user's workload. So I would rather focus on that, make our users' lives simpler and more efficient and have canned software so we don't have to maintain so many people in our office, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Then your didn't your office facilitate the Honeywell, we're switching from Honeywell to another?
We actually, that wasn't decided by us initially. We are switching to JCI for security. But we were involved in it because we maintained the servers. We maintained the the equipment that keeps everything going and I pushed it to get it going just because the servers kept coming going down. So our department is the one that got the camera switched over so that we wouldn't have that issue anymore and we could have recordings. And that's been really super nice. And then I pushed for the security to start going forward, so. And that should be completed in July, right? I believe all buildings will be done in July.
So then will you still maintain the server for the other?
For the new software? Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
So Lori, I I know that I don't know if I'm using the right language here, but state's attorney's office has specific software for.
Don't they use Zerker?
Yes, yes, yeah. So do you have anything to do with that?
No, Zerker is all, that's the sheriff's software. The state's attorney is able to use that software and when they talked about scanning, I think that they're scanning into that software. Correct, and then it's out in the clouds or her is out on the cloud. So previously, we had a software in-house that state's attorneys was using. And where they scanned in at was called File Director, which we have that software in-house here. It's not ours. I mean, we purchased it from Active Data, but there's a lot of scanning that goes into that. DOE uses it. Registered deeds is the main user. Public Defender scans into it now, but I want to say their new software will allow them to scan into that or attach documents to that somehow. But I always encourage departments to be able to use it. HHS uses it. Right now, John, I've set him up so that he can use it. He needs to get with me or what, how he wants it set up. So we got to go through that work, but yeah, that's available to anybody. And what I do with that licensing is at the end of the year, I determine how much space it takes for every department. And then I split the fees and it's really not that expensive.
Okay, so this leads to my next question then. So some of the original scanning was done on software that we no longer probably use?
Not in-house software.
But is the information that 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 was scanned onto, is that still available? Is there a time period that 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 won't even be available to us or not?
If they scanned it into another software and they're not using that software anymore, I don't know what happened to those documents. So like Public Defender initially didn't have any software. And then we got them started on scanning into File Director and we also built them an application. Now they're changing to a canned application from Legal Edge. They're working on that right now. And I believe that they could scan into that, but.
Okay, so how do we?
Old stuff gets scanned in. I mean, I can't tell you how old the stuff is that's going in.
So how do we ensure that if we're if we're scanning these documents, these old documents into something, that those old documents will always be available by digital at some point in time? How do we?
So when I first started here, we were on, I don't even remember the name of the scanning software back then. I think this is our third scanning software and we've always brought the documents forward. It's treated the same way as Registered Deeds. They have to have those documents all digitized. And those are all in File Director. And once you go to a new software, you convert everything and bring it up to the new. So anything that's in File Director, I have no fear about. It's when they're scanning them out and putting them in a folder someplace that I have here.
Sure, okay, okay. That answers my questions. Thank you. Quite other questions, Lori? Thank you, Lori.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody knows to come at the end of the day when we're tired.
Shannon's gonna be a bruiser.
Shannon?
Except for this guy I can wake up for.
Can you beat your last record?
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon. We'll see you next year.
I can be quick. A couple of things that already been talked about, space. We don't need any more space either, but we are maxed out. We're we're at the limit. Insurance, we are one of those departments that ensures some vehicles at full coverage and some not. The same thing with a personal vehicle, at some point, it isn't worth enough to insure it then. That's the way I look at it. My budget is very simple. The the base budget is a reduction and that all comes off of salaries because unfortunately, we lost some very long term employees in the last year and we replaced them with new cheaper employees. And that's that's the only reason for that. The second budget, the only difference is is we we need a new vehicle. I like to replace vehicles on a regular basis and we haven't done that for a while because we had enough of them.
Is none of the sheriff's vehicles or the auction ones, are they just all used out, that we can't use them for other employees?
The sheriff likes to trade in and keep that money. We don't like sheriff's vehicles because when we pull up to a house, we like to talk to the people. We don't like them jumping out the back windows.
They wouldn't say that on there anymore. I'm just saying.
But the one I have, Planning and Zoning, has asked about it and I I plan on not trading it in and just giving it to Planning. I I hear.
Ninety eight Subaru?
Subaru, yes. I hear her talking about buying another one and I don't know if that was her plan all along. And she is looking for for this one of ours as well. It simply isn't worth enough, but is still running all right, that there's no reason to trade it in. We'll keep it. If she don't want it, I'll offer it to another department.
But there's not other departments or anything you guys that have, I was just wondering, maybe Holly or John, maybe you know that, you know, they're trading, they're doing something else that we wouldn't trade it, we just keep them so we could use them for other departments.
If they have trade in value, they typically do that, but to my knowledge, they also swap them around. If they have trade-in value, they typically do that. Um, but to my knowledge, they also swap them around. Yeah.
And, and I would also say about sheriff's vehicles, uh, they put a lot of mileage on those things. Uh, when one guy gets out, another one gets in it and the thing never quits running.
Yeah, it just, that's a good point. You may, you may be given, wanting to be given, bringing something that's gonna cost her more in the long run. To keep, keep running.
The one, the one we got is, uh, is over a hundred thousand miles, but it's a Subaru that it's a good vehicle. She's not expecting much out of this.
Well, I, I'm just saying, mind the shop now and every time it goes in, it's over a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
He's low maintenance.
I'm just saying.
Mr. Chair. Ron. Shannon, I realize you lost some really seasoned employees and you got some new employees. I'm surprised that, that line item traveling conferences that, uh, I would assume that some of these employees will be going to seminars and stuff as they go towards their certification or whatever.
Yeah, uh, new or seasoned, we're required, uh, to attend schools and conference for, uh, for our certification, so, um, it, it doesn't matter, uh, what, how long you've worked. You still, um, we encourage education, but it's also a requirement from the state.
Yeah, I just see that the line item, you get thirty-two thousand five hundred. I thought that might be a little higher with the more new employees going to seminars and conferences. Not that I'm complaining, I just.
E- even experienced employees, uh, still are required to have it. And I encourage it for all of my employees, even those that have been around a long time. I'll insist that, uh, you continue with education. Uh, so I don't, uh, I don't back off on those that have been around a long time and say you don't need it so much.
Yeah, because before you had like fourteen or twelve thousand unless it was around COVID.
This last year, uh, we, they, they canceled a lot of it. So we, we missed.
Well, I just meant for the years before it was twelve or fourteen, but you also had people that were more experienced. You didn't have to train more people were at thirty-two. That's, you're gonna need that.
And, and there is a greater expense on new employees because there's some initial classes for new employees that we don't have with experience then, and we'll have that next year.
Good job, Shannon. See you later.
I would like to, uh, add one more thing though, and that's, uh, this is my sales pitch for what Cindy's gonna talk about. Uh, we are looking at new software, uh, that goes through tax software, through the assessor's office, the auditor's office and the treasurer's office or assessor, uh, yeah, assessor, auditor, treasurer, that, that path. And, and get rid of, uh, what Lori is talking about that requires her staff to create and maintain. Uh, it is incredibly complicated software and right now Lori's the only one that understands it. Uh, we, we want to buy something else and it's a huge purchase, um, but then it'll be a big deal for, uh, for Lori not to have to have the staff to maintain. The, the one we're using now, they created.
How, how huge is the purchase?
Uh, Cindy will be talking about that and I think she said, uh, she told me about six hundred thousand, uh, for a purchase. Um, and I don't have that in my budget. Uh, discussion with her, uh, earlier was, is I don't care whose budget you put it in. All of the offices need it. I don't care how it's split up. It's a county expense. Put it all in my budget. I don't care. Uh, it, it, it goes for all of the offices and it's something we need to do.
Is there an easy payment plan?
Cindy will talk about that. I think the companies that sell these software do have payment plans. I, I, I think so.
Actually, I think that's what they did with one of Cindy's or, or not Cindy's, uh, Lori.
But once you purchase it, then you split it.
But then it's ongoing, isn't it?
There, there's always a maintenance cost, uh, maintenance and help, uh, with any kind of software. Uh, we don't know what it is. This, this software actually is a company, uh, that advertises itself as the largest supplier of software to governments in, in this country. And, uh, they have software that they have told us we will not be happy with and they are updating it. And, and we have regular, I think, weekly or bi-weekly meetings with this company. And we are one of the, the counties that is helping them update the software in anticipation of getting it, uh, uh, improved and good enough for us. We, we could buy it now, uh, but even the company tells us we probably won't be happy with it. Uh, other counties in South Dakota have it and, and in other states. Um, it, it isn't, uh, it isn't going to be perfect. Uh, we will still need Lori to create those, uh, programs that she's talking about that, uh, fill the gaps that this canned software doesn't do.
Is canned software what she said she did like before or she didn't?
She does.
Yep. Canned software is another company creates it and maintains it. She just has to create the little programs that fill in the gap between what we're doing now and what the canned software will do, because we don't want our life to change. I want to keep doing everything I'm doing now and the new software might not do something. Lori fixes that.
But you've been here long enough. I think you need some change.
Any other questions, Shannon?
No.
Anything else you want to share with us?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We've come to the end of our departments today.
Jesus, I was getting restless.
So we start again at eight-thirty tomorrow morning. Uh, my suggestion would be is that we individually take all the information that we received, uh, review it. Come on up, Cindy. I'm, I am in a lecture speed. Uh, review it on each department. Uh, and then as we get together, when Holly, if they end up tomorrow or are we talking about doing that? Okay. Uh, have some discussions if we need, if we got questions yet that we didn't get answered. Let's get those asked so that we can get the questions answered and so forth.
If I need a working session, because you'll get what all the information you have tomorrow and then you need a working session. So you know, I believe that, so you know everything that's actually people want, how much we have and then start asking Cindy a lot of questions in between there. Otherwise, if you do, I think tomorrow you can review some of this stuff, but then you're gonna have a whole new department that you have to review and then you're saying direction and some other stuff. It's just your first direction, um, to where we're going, I guess.
Basically, don't we have to look at this as a whole when it's done? Make sure we're staying within parameters, uh.
That's what I'm saying. So you got your whip tonight, but how are you gonna, you're gonna be able to do all that tomorrow that we have?
No, I, no, what I'm saying is if you, if you find that you have additional questions on the information that was presented, now is the time to get them asked so that we can, so we can get those answers. They will put together, we'll have all the, all the numbers on this and the secondary requests.
You have it now.
We have it all.
And tomorrow the board can just discuss what preliminary direction you want to go, what you've decided that your priorities are. Because departments have to have some direction of what you want to do. Cindy has to have some direction on what the provisional should be.
But that secondary budget, that is a lot of frickin' information and that's a lot of cash flow stuff and it's hard to figure out. I, I don't, I don't know where to go.
Yeah, I agree. Didn't we used to, maybe I'm missing it here, a one time, but even with the secondary, you typed up something that if we gave everything to everybody, what would it, how would we get there? What would it take? The base is this.
I, I can certainly, you know, prepare a means of finance showing what it would be if we used all, everybody's secondary budget, if that's what you would like to see. Um, I do have some jumbled numbers that I put together on what it would do to, to reserves if we did that.
Sure.
Um, but I can certainly put it in to actual means of finance if you'd like. I didn't really want to go down having twelve different versions of the budget, but. You just have to prove the provisional by the end of July, by the thirtieth, so. You guys could make motions on July sixth. We could schedule special sessions, absolutely.
Yeah, we. I think once you saw the, like I said, the overall picture of what we have, what monies we can use, what that does to the levy, if we use five million, if we use ten million, whatever, uh, on some of that. And then, um, break it down and then we, what we did was we voted on it. We voted on, hey, did you want, you know, through all of the secondary, did everybody want that? Everybody want that? Everybody want that? And then once they eliminated what they didn't want and they did, then we saw where we were again and then.
And that was our thoughts with having you guys do all the hearings today and tomorrow and then kind of give some preliminary direction on how you want it, because Cindy can prepare you seventeen different options.
Yeah.
And I really hate to do that because that's where numbers get dropped.
Want to confuse things.
Right, yeah. I can tell you that if we added everything that affects the general fund, and I'm looking at just the general fund only, if we did everything that affects the general fund, our reserve would go from thirty-two percent down to twenty-five percent.
Mike, uh, how about the, uh, twenty-two million that we'll get from COVID? How do we treat that? Just, uh?
Right now, we just treat it as it's a secret.
We don't discuss it.
We, yeah, we haven't really gotten final direction on
Right.
the expenditures that we can use that for, but it will be, just as Lloyd said, it's going to be one-time expenditures, so.
But that's something we just kind of say it's out there, but we don't even.
Yeah, we don't even want to look at it in the twenty-twenty-two budget. We really don't.
Okay. Well, I, I think about it, not.
I know. Everybody thinks about it.
I, I think there's some things that, for instance, uh, one of the things that, that Deb had suggested was the, the two million for the planning, uh, for the housing.
Yeah.
Commission. Uh, that may well be able to come from, from something like that. But I don't think we are in a position where we can commit anything at this point in time for those funds. It'd be like, uh, community wall too. I think we were looking at some infrastructure for that. Yeah. So.
So tell me what you, you said if we did everything we want, it would take from thirty-two to twenty-five. What do you mean by that?
In the, um, general fund budget alone.
Like all the.
Everything that would affect general fund. So that's state's attorney, public defender, um, buildings and grounds, equalization, human resources, um, weed and pest planning. And then that would also include, um, emergency management because that affects general fund because part of general fund supports that. So that would be an increase there. E nine-one-one, if you approve their secondary budget, that's also going to affect general fund. And if you approve the accumulated building secondary budget, that affects general fund because that's a shift in tax dollars. The tax dollars are gonna go to accumulated building and not go in the general fund. So that total is like three point seven million dollars. And so that would reduce the estimated reserve at the end of twenty-twenty-two from thirty-two percent down to twenty-five, plus twenty-five point nine percent.
You'll have basically, you said it was, how much, how, how much was it for that total three point?
Three point seven million.
Right, and we had six?
Yes, but everything that you're approving in those secondary are ongoing expenditures and you don't want to approve them.
That's what we talked about. That, did we want to keep doing? And that, that was the biggest issue.
It's about sustainability.
Because our budget's not gonna be sustainable.
Right.
Right. That's, that's really what it's about is that sustainability.
Yeah. And that's, I, I think you brought up a good point. Maybe tomorrow when we have our discussions that I, you're right, maybe we need to, I think Holly's in the past broke, broke out a list and we voted on each one individually to see where we were at.
What affects general fund for ongoing? What affects on the areas that won't? Remember the capital you said if they're, if they're not gonna affect our reserve and they're not gonna be ongoing for the future, those should be in a different category, I think, than the ones that are affecting and meaning our ongoing costs. Do you see what I'm saying? Because some of those departments aren't gonna be ongoing, their capital costs and those might be simplified by taking out the ones that are, are actually gonna affect our general fund or levies or ongoing costs for the next fifty years.
I think they got that broken in here. We've got a list of possible one-time purchases like that software, that type of thing that may with the ongoing ones.
But there wasn't any we missed today that they added or?
Ron, the right trip.
So does the department know that here's the bottom line, that they're be affecting their secondary budget and we asked them to do it. We probably should have said something about ongoing costs and affecting the budget of the general fund by a huge percentage.
No, I think, I think they know that.
They know that, okay. I didn't know if they did or they didn't.
I don't, I don't think there's any question they know that. Okay. Anything else you want to share with us, Cindy?
Thank you, Cindy, for everything you've done.
Shannon was throwing me under the bus on the software, but that is one of those one-time expenditures that we've already got some money saved towards it. So yes, I will be asking for it.
He likes bus rolling.
So you will, you will have the opportunity at some point in time to throw Shannon completely under the bus.
Okay.
And if you want to do just one thing, that's fine. If you want to just save it up.
We throw him under the bus all the time. It's quite funny.
All right.
Okay. I need a motion to recess until tomorrow at eight-thirty A M. Commissioner Lassiter moved. And Commissioner Legroy seconded. All those in favor indicate we're saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried.